All right, we have now achieved quorum. And I am going to call the meeting to order. As always, I will read the agenda. Sometimes we take items a little out of order in order to keep the meeting moving. But we have community input to start. Appointments and resignations. We have community appointments, employee appointments, and annual appointments. We have open file town meeting warrant, which we're going to open tonight. The fiscal twenty-three budget transfers, which is going to be done jointly with the FinCom, who already has a quorum here. Thank you very much for joining us. Public hearing on the transfer of retail package store license for the Ferns Country Store at Eight Lowell Street. Meeting with the Conservation Commission in regards to the Boghouse, the Green Hill and the Green Hill Dam. Center Park sign approval, master plan implementation, public safety facilities study scoping discussion, which is a continuation. And potentially we'll vote on it tonight. TA report, review of the minutes and warrants, which we absolutely have got to do because we have fallen behind. Plus, we took them off, so we're really be much more behind than we've ever been, so we really have to catch up on that tonight. I don't care what time we end the meeting, that's getting in there. Liaison, report and selections and community input again. So I see that Jenny Janesko is here with us for community input. If you'd like to come join us, Jenny, thanks. Oh, sorry. Can you hear better now?
Can you hear me?
Do speak right into the microphone. Apparently they're very, as you noted, Jenny, they are, they are obviously very demented. You need them directional.
Okay, I'm going to read my input today. It's easier, it's very short, it's just one page. And I would like to, I'm Jenny Janesko, eight-nine-eight Maple Street, Carlisle. Carlisle could use a community center, but I know of no current substantive effort to determine if that can happen. A community center would serve all the age population diversity of Carlisle. From baby, babies and toddlers to the seniorist of senior citizens, all at the same time. Yet the priorities, that is, the planning, funding, and building are on a dog park and a pickleball court. Right now, the dog park is a given. The, um, the long-term twenty-twenty-six proposed budget includes two-hundred thousand dollars for a pickleball court. Nothing is slated for researching a community center builds. Please note that I am not inherently against dog parks or pickleball courts, but they will serve a very small segment of the population of Carlisle. Dogs are my favorite people, and I guarantee if I had a dog, I would certainly take her on a no-leash rump. Pickleball gets high reviews for making exercise a lot of fun, but how many people will a pickleball court actually accommodate? Little, and that's in quotes, little projects like these, when added up, make for a very large budget, both non-recurring and recurring, that prevents other, more important projects from happening. The problem lies in the fact that a community center requires two forms of currency. The first, of course, is the money that it would take to plan, build, and maintain such a facility. And those dollars would ultimately come from the citizens' pockets. The second currency is the oft-forgotten land required. Once town land is designated for a particular purpose, like a dog park or a pickleball court, it would be very hard to reassign it to a different use. Human nature is human nature, and although I am not a psychologist, I can safely say that we humans get very comfortable, comfortable with things remaining just as they are. Tax breaks for qualifying senior citizens are nice, but don't meet the need of socialization opportunities that a community center would provide. Then there are the parents who so many times move away when their kids graduate. Wouldn't a community center be a great place for them to congregate and expand their friendships? What about the children themselves who will see an assembly of all different ages chatting, engaged in different activities, and enjoying themselves in one place at the same time, sort of a playground for all? Whether Carlisle doesn't want or cannot afford a community center, that conclusion should come about after a planned, deliberate effort to assess needs and desires and a town meeting vote. Not left to the chance someday that we might take a closer look. By the time of that someday, the two currencies Carlisle needs may have been expended. After all, the road to someday always leads to never. Thank you for listening.
Thanks, Jenny. Is there anybody else here, either in person or remotely, that would like to offer some public, community input? Seeing none, we're going to move on with our appointments and resignations.
Would you like me to make?
I would love for you to make motion.
Okay. This is under community appointments. I move to appoint Ariella Rebby, fifty-two Indian Hill Road, to serve on the Cranberry Bog Working Group with an indefinite term. I also moved to appoint Craig Lielman, two-sixty-sixth East Street, to serve on the Finance Committee with a term that will expire on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. And I move to approve the recommendation of the Historical Commission to appoint alternate members Ed Rolfe, nine-sixteen Maple Street, and Colby Mock of one-eighty Concord Street to serve as full-time members with terms that will expire on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six.
Is there a second? David, David, are you there? David?
You're muted at the moment, David.
I can't hear anyone. I'm trying to get on my cellphone.
Okay.
Can others hear fine?
Yeah, we can hear you fine.
Yeah, you're really faint, and I'm trying to troubleshoot this, but anyone else who's remote can hear fine, I guess?
Christina, could you let us know whether you can hear us from Mary Lynn?
Can you get off for a little while? Let me see if it gets better. Can you get off your phone for a minute?
And yes, I can hear fine.
Now I'm better. I think you have to stay off, or you'll have to go to the lobby to use your phone. Sorry, we're in a hotel room, and I just kicked my son off his device.
Okay. Well, David, I just.
Got a little better. I'm gonna try my phone and see if that's better, but was I supposed to vote on something?
No, we have a motion.
We have a motion on the floor to appoint three different people to different committees.
Yeah, I approve. I read all those. I approve all those.
We need a second.
I'll second all those.
Okay, thank you. So now I'm going to do roll call vote. All those in favor, well, actually, roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
Model I.
Read I. Okay.
And then I move on to the employee appointments. I move to appoint Tyler Benagel to the laborer-driver position with the Department of Public Work, subject to successful salary negotiations.
Second.
Okay, we're going to do roll call?
Arnold, I.
Model I.
Read I. And then there is a list of annual appointments in our packets. And I would like to make a motion to, let me get down to it, to approve the reappointments as noted in red on, in the packet, under fiscal year twenty-twenty-four appointments.
Second.
All right, roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
Model I.
Read I. Excellent. So that is that. We have number, item number three, and Barney, can you make that motion? We're opening the fall town meeting warrant.
Yes, let me get that. Yes, here it is. All right, I move that the Select Board vote to open the warrant for the October sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three special town meeting.
Second.
To, oh, to open the warrant today? Is that what we want to say for today, right? To open the warrant for the October sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three special town meeting today, June twenty-seventh, and further vote to close the warrant on August eighth, twenty-twenty-three.
Okay. Okay, great. Any discussion?
Just the August eighth seems a little early, but we backed it out.
Backed it out.
Had to go that way. Okay.
Okay, yeah. So we have a roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
Model I.
Read I. Excellent. Thank you. Budget transfers. We might as well just do that, because we do have the FinCom with us. Madam Chair, you have to open your meeting.
Can I say something quickly about the fall town meeting? So the Select Board should know, the ones who are here, that we have three administrative meetings before we have to sign and enclose the warrant. So if the Select Board has, I mean, I know we haven't received things, but I'm going to be pushing out warrant articles as they pop up so that we can have time to deliberate, as we learned in the last process, but it is very compressed, which is why we are opening now and signaling to everyone that we need, we need these items. We do have to sign the warrant by September twelfth. We have about a week's leeway there if we really had to move, so believe it or not, we're a hundred days out from town meeting. So it's moving quickly, and you can see how the summer goes sometimes.
And when you say administrative means, you mean Select Board meetings that are regular, not, not Select Board meetings, not the goal ones? Okay.
There's some big topics, some bylaw changes, the opt-in stretch code that was pushed off, some things that are gonna, I'm anticipating are gonna require some debate, so it's, it's worth noting that the Select Board should be focusing on those items and asking for any time or, or information they need to make those decisions.
And this came up in the, well, I've forgotten what committee, but the, if, if a, if a committee wants to submit a warrant article, they can submit a sort of a placeholder with a general description, and, but by when do they have to have the final version in, before the Select Board?
By September twelfth, but we'll help them with language and so will Town Council. It's more the, the meat and potatoes of the issues so that the recommendations can be sound.
Yeah, and so will this be pushed out through various social media, including the mosquito, the, and to all the board chairs?
Yes, before the holiday, and then after the holiday, we're paying attention.
Yes, okay, good.
Okay. End of year budget transfers.
All right, so before we open the meeting.
Can you speak closer to the microphone? Sorry, I want to make sure everybody can hear you.
Before we open the meeting, I need to confirm that we have a quorum. I think we have one person.
I'm here, Lynn.
Victor's there.
We have Victor and Craig, so you need four, right?
But he hasn't been sworn in.
He cannot be. Yeah, I've been texting people, so.
Do we want to do something else first?
Do that while I'm waiting, and I'm.
Yeah.
All right. Sorry about that, but.
It happens.
It's already summer, yes. You notice, we're, we're kind of SP light here tonight.
Come on, you and I and David, you got it.
We are going to go to the TA report, because that's the only.
Or do you want to do the, well, you want to do the Ferns Package Store License?
No, seven-thirty, you can't do that now.
Gotcha, okay.
May I suggest the minutes?
Oh, yes, let's do the minutes, because we absolutely have to do that. Okay, so that's number eleven.
All down at the end.
Yeah, and they, want to use mine? Okay. And I have a motion for the approval.
Yes, are we gonna do them date by date?
Not on my behalf.
Not on your, so, yeah, I'm comfortable with the management.
Because I edited all of them.
Okay, so I move that we approve the following Select Board meeting minutes as presented slash amended in the Select Board packet for April eleventh, twenty-twenty-three, April eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three, April twenty-five, twenty-twenty-three, May eight, twenty-twenty-three, May nine, twenty-twenty-three, May twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three, and June thirteen, twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
Okay, great. Any discussions? Any more amendments? A roll call vote. Arnold, I.
Model I.
Read I. Excellent, we are caught up with minutes.
Thank you, Jen.
Let me see, you still don't, let me wave your hand and jump up and down, not you with your foot. Want my knee scooter? I have a knee scooter if you need it. Okay. Can't do end of year, so TA report, back to the TA report.
Sure, I will, I will go and give my report to the board, so the, I usually start with Town Hall news and improvements. First, I just want to say that I did attend my first old, old home day here in Carlisle, that is, like usual, was far exceeded my expectations of what a day could be. I did avoid the dunk booth, nobody invited me to that.
I noticed that. I was waiting to dunk you, by the way.
I saw an Olympian in there in the superintendent of schools, so I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have been a good candidate, but the, I did get to judge a pie contest. I had eleven pieces of pie before eleven o'clock, which was interesting, and saw a variety of events to include a lot of Town Hall staff engaging with the community. Was able to speak with some community members and then save my marriage by heading up north all in one day, so that was very exciting. In terms of stuff going on at Town Hall, the second floor, the cubicle project, which has long been talked about, has now been finalized. Special thanks to our interior designing Select Board Chair, who helped me understand color schemes and other things that make sense. We have ordered the first phase, so that first phase runs from the assessing office to the planning office, for those who know the second floor of Town Hall. So this will create a, a individual space for each employee. We took special care to make sure that it's accessible to the public, and we removed a lot of the barriers to make it more opening and inviting to people who are looking to interact with Town Hall. We also are working to make sure we have spaces downstairs for ADA accessibility and to make sure any residents who need any accessibility get it from our staff. So we expect Phase One to be completed in mid-August. The reason why it's not starting tomorrow is, as everybody knows, the lead times and everything is extensive, and we're looking at six to eight weeks for them to be delivered. When it is delivered, we'll be engaging with the DPW to remove a lot of furniture and then install the furniture. We expect it to take forty-eight hours, so there will be a closure of, of at least the second floor of Town Hall with employees working remotely while we do that. And we'll give plenty of notice, but it will come quick. The next step is to engage with King Systems to finalize our land use records and reorganize that space so we can kick off Phase Two. So we have to move the records and consolidate the files before we can install the cubes, and then the same project with the same materials will, will take place there. So it should look completely different for people who are coming to the space. We, we took a lot of care with the design. There is windows at the top to make sure that light continues to flow and employees have good space, so. Change is always change, and it comes with some consternation, but we, we do believe that we have the best possible solution. The stop and start on the fishbowl rooms that are down here is starting again on Friday. They came to install them, and the angles were wrong. Al did a good job advocating for the town, and they reconfigured them for the proper fit, and they'll be coming on Friday. So we should see those rooms completed, and then we'll work on furnishing them. And then the MFC is engaged with our building envelope designers, Gail, to complete an envelope study. Some important notes that the Select Board, I think, will be happy to hear is there'll be some thermal scanning of the outside to make sure that we are doing our due diligence for cost savings and sustainability. They're looking at the placement of a new RTU and perhaps a heat pump, which would be more sustainable, so that'll be ready to go in terms of design once we make the move on that project, and they're doing some bore sampling and others in the roof to get a timeline on those two major projects, the RTU and the roof. So we should have some good clarity after the study's complete on what's left for Town Hall upgrades.
I would question Ryan.
Yes, sir.
You used the word "secure" the Town Hall building for the next twenty, ten to twenty years. Can you define what you mean by that?
I'm sorry, which context?
In the building envelope, in your report on the building envelope, you said "secure the Town Hall for the next ten to twenty years." I just wasn't sure what that means.
I think the word was, I was trying to be a little too artistic, so you make sure that it's airtight and following the best practices in terms of sustainability, so sustain is probably better than secure.
Well, I mean, we, we may, I guess I'm trying to understand, we, we've had various informal conversations about extending the envelope in some fashion. TBD, I mean, we're not deliberating that right now, but, so I guess I don't quite understand the envelope study. Maybe you could explain it a little differently.
So this would be in preparation for any discussion about expanding this space or not? So if, if the building wasn't going to be expanded, we'd want to tighten it down to make sure that it's more sustainable. The thermal scanning will give us an idea of what we shouldn't do in case we did want to expand the envelope. And I did discuss with the designers that, that it might be a possibility to look at additional space here, so they're taking that into account in the study. We should get a little bit on that, but not on the design.
All right, thank you.
For human resources updates, surprisingly, we don't have a, a ton. Tyler was appointed tonight. He's, the DPW is very excited to be fully staffed at this point with their new leadership and new staff. There's a lot of energy and a lot of good work coming out of the DPW. And then also, they're able to overcome some of the summer vacation challenges with the new staff, which is good, while doing some training. For those who don't know, the DPW doesn't really get an opportunity to take time off in the winter, so the summer, when they have to do a lot of work, is also the time they take time off, so Jim's managing that. And then the Board of Health is finalizing the hiring of an intern to assist in the department this summer, as they look at their staffing. In terms of procurement and projects, I am now meeting weekly with the school department to help with procurement and projects. Couple of things that we're working on right now are approved projects either at Town Meeting or through ARPA, which is the wastewater treatment plant, RTU, and air exchange, the Wilkins Building HVAC, and the Corey Auditorium lighting. All of those procurements will hit the books before, before the July fourth holiday. We're finalizing those in a meeting tomorrow. And then we'll be managing those buildings, projects together. So my involvement is to assist the school and help with procurement. Stevens working the maintenance angle, and then I'm working hand in hand with the superintendent and the school business manager in order to make sure that the finances are correct. We finished, and I'm sure everybody's very excited to see the road repair and reconstruction project for East Rutland, Pine Brook, and Patch Meadow Lane. All of that's been submitted to the state for reimbursement. We, I drove all the surfaces, so did Jim, to make sure, to make sure that they were good and sound. We believe the work exceeded expectations. They did a lot of work for free with residents on driveway aprons and other things, which we appreciated. It only went over budget by ten thousand, and I know that seems like a funny sentence, but we were expecting more, so we're happy that we hit the number almost exactly. And now we will be working on a procurement where we can do more on-call paving, and that'll come to you in the fall with the idea that we might do some additional paving in the fall, given our current Chapter Ninety situation. And slow down on East Street, please, per the police and some of the residents. I know it's a nice surface, but slow down.
Just have one quick thing to say publicly is, A, I really appreciate the DPW's work on the streets, and also in particular, the clearing they're doing on the pathway, and particularly the section from here up to the rotary is very passable now and will be much more enjoyable to walk. Thank you, DPW.
We are, as, as folks know, the library had some parking issues while they were working on the roof that is now open. But the roof looks good, the project's going. I, I can say that Gail has done a great job managing the project. Cape Way has been very professional and easy to work with. We're meeting weekly about the progress, and that project should be done soon. We also identified some other things, like cleaning off the slate and replacing some of those tiles while they were up there, which was cheaper than trying to do that on the fly. So the MFC has been managing that project and working to make sure that it's, it's good. So the roof should be secure. And then the renovation project, and then looking at some of the parking and paving for long-term focuses at the, at the library.
Ryan, I'm going to interrupt you here, I'm sorry. I see that FinCom has their quorum now, so I'd like to come back to your TA report, let them, we'll let them open their meeting, and then we'll come back to where you were.
I'll allow it.
Thank you. Okay, make it away, Lynn.
Thank you for your patience. I'd like to open up the FinCom meeting with a roll call, please.
Tatia here.
Leah here.
Lipinski here.
Showberg here. I wasn't sure if McMorro was on.
Nope, that's everybody.
Okay, great.
And Craig, I'd like to welcome you and to encourage you to come down to Town Hall ASAP to get sworn in so that you can be a voting member of the FinCom next time we have our joint meeting.
Thank you so much. Will do.
For volunteering, yes. I did a little arm twisting, but.
Nice work, Kate.
Welcome, Craig.
Madam's Chair, we have our Town Accountant here as well.
Excellent.
So I'm going to open the floor up to FinCom if they have any questions regarding the year-end transfers. Everybody got a copy of it? Does anybody have any questions for Kelly? Or if Kelly wants to just quickly run through it, that probably would be helpful, Kelly, if you wouldn't mind?
Of course. So the, the one up on the screen, that's the latest version. There was a slight change that we adjusted for this morning. This is basically a year-end cleanup. A vote like this happens every year for, to account for things that may have been unexpected or some budgets that were a little tighter than others that, in a particular fiscal year. Other departments that came in under budget or are anticipating larger turnbacks than normal were able to, with the Select Board vote and a FinCom concurrence, move money between those budget line items as they were originally voted at Town Meeting. So this list identifies those areas, so any positive number identifies where funding would be going. So you're looking at the police, blanket insurance, general expense in Town Hall, and public celebrations would be getting an increase to their budgets by the amounts noted. And the others below, any of the negative figures, are the departments that are anticipating a larger turnback than normal that can help offset the increases in other areas. So if you were to add those up all the way down, the, the net effect is zero to the overall budget. It's really just moving between line items.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Just for reference, Kelly did, did inform us of this earlier, so we did have discussions around this, but I want to make sure that everybody on the FinCom is clear, or if they have any follow-up questions, anybody? Victor, Heidi?
No follow-ups.
Oh, good here.
James?
On here.
Okay. Could someone please make a motion to vote pursuant to Chapter Forty-four, Section thirty-three B, to approve the year-end transfers between the various line items of fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three budget as detailed in the memo from the Town Accountant?
They have to make the motion, and then you concur.
And then we concur, sorry. Sorry, take that back.
That's okay.
I appreciate the enthusiasm.
Practice, help, help.
I think David has his hand raised on a remote.
Yeah, I mean, are we, is the FinCom doing theirs thing, and then we do our thing, or is it together?
No, we use the board first.
And then the Com will concur with our motion if they concur, if they were to.
Okay, Madam Chair, do you prefer I make the motion and then just ask my question?
In front of you, that would be great.
I don't have it in front of me now.
Oh, well, I can do it then.
Let Barney do it, and you can give us a second.
I move that the Select Board vote pursuant to Master General Law's Chapter Forty-four, Section thirty-three B, to approve year-end transfers between various line items of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three budget as detailed in a memo from the Town Accountant dated June twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three, as included in our packet.
Second.
Second, good. There's a second from David. David, do you have any questions?
Yeah, sort of two groups of questions. So Kelly, just explain to me blanket insurance compared with group and other insurances. Blanket is P and N, property and casualty, or GL, or what?
Yep, property and casualty, any, you know, onboarding type physicals, those type. those types of things fall into that category as well.
So we had a, a rise there and we saved on group and unemployment, I guess. Is that probably true?
Yes, I think, um, there tends to be an overage in the, in the group insurance line, just based on history. Um, but blanket insurance is one that tends to always fall short. I think it always tends to be kind of a, a delay in the budget process. But I think we've got that caught up for 24, pretty close to it.
Okay. And then can you explain the basic overage on the police side?
Um, primarily for, um, uh, contract closeouts, you know, legal settlements for.
Um, I think Ryan will answer that.
This is just overage on, on the human resources side for.
Okay, I got it. Okay. All right, no further questions. Thank you.
All right, um, we're doing a roll call vote because we're hybrid.
Arnold, I.
No, they're I.
Reed, I. So that passes and, and you can take your concur.
And then do you make a motion to concur? Is that how it works?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm motioning to concur. Um, could someone make a motion to concur, uh, to approve the transfer as approved by the select board?
So moved.
On the memo dated June 27th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Tatia, I.
Liang, I.
Lipinski, I.
Showberg, I.
So moved.
Okay.
Excellent, excellent.
Thank you, everyone.
I'd like to have someone make a motion if we have no more business.
I don't think we have any more business, but we would like to get together for, uh, you know, at the end of the summer.
Definitely.
Okay.
I'd like to have someone please make a motion to adjourn the FinCom meeting now, please.
So moved.
For a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Tatia, I.
Liang, I.
Lipinski, I.
Showberg, I.
Great, thank you and welcome, Craig. Thank you.
Welcome, Craig.
Thank you all. Thank you very much. Well, we're right on time.
Great.
Um, we have a public meeting. My timer's. I set my alarm for it. Um, and I will read the, um, announcement, um, of the notice of the public hearing of Town of Carlisle. Town of Carlisle Select Board will conduct a public hearing on the application for a transfer of retail package goods store license to expose, keep for sale and to sell wine and malt alcoholic beverages, not to be drunk on the premise at 8 Lowell Street, Carlisle, Mass. 01741 from Barry Barnes LLC Store License. Matthew Hurwick, Manager, Doing Business as Fern's Country Store to Arts Specialties LLC. Artur Nagarian, Manager, Doing Business as Fern's Country Store. Said public hearing is held on Tuesday, June 27th, 2023 at 7:30. Our agenda said 7:35, so I apologize for the five-minute delay. Um, at the Carlisle Town Hall, Clark Room located at 66 Westford Street, Carlisle, Mass. 01741, as well as virtually in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 138. Meeting participation instructions will be listed on the meeting agenda posted with the town clerk, minimum of 48 hours before the meeting date. All are invited to participate. Okay. Do I have a motion?
Sure, I'll make the motion. I move that the select board vote to approve the application for a transfer of retail package goods store license to expose, keep for sale and to sell wine and malt alcoholic beverages, not to be drunk on the premises at 8 Lowell Street, Carlisle, Massachusetts, 01741, from Barry Barnes LLC Store License. Matthew Hurwick, Manager, Doing Business as Fern's Country Store to Arts Specialties LLC. Artur Nagarian, Manager, Doing Business as Fern's Country Store.
For a second?
Second.
All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody here that would like to, um, comment with information?
Can the select board comment?
Yes, it's a public hearing. Go ahead.
Um, this is just the sale of, is there a separate, what, what's the?
You know, you broke up, so I'm sorry I didn't catch your question, but I think that you're.
Okay, I'm sorry. So this is to approve a sale of, the sale, not the drinking of alcohol.
That's correct.
In the prior life, you could also drink there? Is that under a vitualler's license?
That's, yes, that's a different license.
And that's not being transferred today, correct?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Um, are there any further questions or comments? Um, do I have a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All right, hearing is closed. Any, um, deliberation or discussion by the board?
Do we have a motion to actually transfer?
We have a motion on the table. We do have a motion on the table already.
Okay.
You seconded it already.
Okay, good.
So I'm going to call for a roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
No, they're I.
Reed, I. Thank you. Okay.
Good job.
Introduced him. Yeah, that was Artur.
I suspected that's who it was, but I didn't know for sure.
Okay.
Um, meeting with the Conservation Commission and they look like they are all here or many of you are here. Um, oh, that you, okay, well. Oh, I was. He was, he's, he's, oh, he's a, what they call emeritus. Okay, well, why don't you come forward and we'll discuss. Uh, do you have somebody here for, um, the bog house? That's what we want to start with. Yeah, yeah.
Took it as a summons to.
Okay, we'll take that.
Here I am.
Okay. Um, let us know who you are, please.
Yes, for the record, I'm Alex Para, outgoing chair of the Conservation Commission.
All right. You want to give us some background? Um, Sylvia, do you want to join, uh, Alex? Okay. We largely need to know, um, like the disposition of the bog house at this point. We know its condition and, um, tenants and under which, you know, under what conditions or agreements they're living in.
So I think Sylvia had forwarded to you a fairly recent inspection report, um, of the, uh, bog house with some, I would characterize it as limited, um, repairs that are necessary. The bog house, um, the last time, my understanding anyway, last time there was any formal occupancy agreement or license agreement is 2012. Um, you know, better than 10 years ago. Um, and that, and Steve helped me if I'm wrong here, is may have better historical knowledge than I. But that agreement arose, um, as a result of the bog house having been vacated by prior tenants and been left empty, uh, for a period of years, um, during which the bog house fell into a great disrepair. Um, the license agreement in generalities, um, was, uh, the license agreement with, uh, Great Brook, um, to, um, not characterizing in generalities to, uh, house agricultural workers. Um, and was a quid pro quo in that Great Brook was going to maintain , uh, the bog house and perform, you know, repairs. Um, and that's continued, um, to my understanding, at least informally, since 2012. Um, I think that.
Um, Steve, Steve, you're going to have to.
Yeah, bring your chair up and, um.
So just to be clear, that agreement, the last, the 2012 agreement was a successor agreement. Uh, I don't know how many versions, but more or less, uh, the first agreement started like around 94. I could give, somebody needs to know the exact date, but the, the 2012 agreement was a successor agreement where, um, the then tenants, you know, basically, I won't say renewed, but continued, you know, under, every three years under new agreement. And the last one of those apparently was 2012.
And the, and that was still with Great Brook and the agreement around the, yeah.
As I know, yeah.
Yeah.
And the, the idle period was, we are facing, you know, basically a repeat of history right now. There were concerned citizens in 1990 that put up such a sting that the then tenant left. The house remained vacant for two and a half to three years, during which time it was unheeded, unattended to, and it literally almost collapsed on itself. And during the course of those three years, there were three bog house subcommittees formed, two disbanded after failure, and finally the third found a configuration and an arrangement that would work for both the town and a, and a, and an occupant. And that relationship has continued now more or less 20 years, round numbers. You know, you need exact dates, we can get those, but that's the gist of it.
Okay.
One slight correction is that I have found a 2009 agreement that expired in 2012.
Okay.
I told you there are other people who knew more than.
Well, and there was, there was one, there were two before that.
Yeah.
Taking me back to 94.
Yeah.
Rounds the terms.
But there was a, the lease agreement providing the lower two floors of the bog house were in place through 2015, 16 in that period. That was a lease.
For clarification.
Yeah.
Bottom two floors.
So the virtual crowd is saying they need you to get closer to the mic.
So there are, thank you, virtual clouds. Um, the, the, the leasing of the structure has always been subdivided into two components. The bottom two floors for primarily for the use of and harvesting and maintenance of equipment for cranberries. The third floor, if you count up from the bottom, because I don't want to get into the horticulture, was for agricultural workers. And the fourth floor was always retained for Town of Carlisle use for storage or whatever, but it was never to be occupied because, um, there was, um, lead paint contamination on the upper topmost floor, but not the apartment floor.
And there were separate leases on all of these?
Right, so when, when Sylvia speaks of leases, you gotta be, you have to make a distinction between the agricultural lease, which was for the growing of cranberries on the bog and the bottom two floors and the apartment lease, which was separate and apart from it initially. And I think it got rolled into an agricultural lease later on, possibly. I just, I didn't, I didn't, I don't, I didn't keep up with the paperwork after about, after about 2009 when I left, excuse me, no, 99 when I left the mission. Yeah, I just, there was, but the point is, when you speak of agreements, you need to be, there are two and they may have emerged at some point.
Yeah.
The third floor was off.
It'll be, yeah, I'm sorry.
The third floor was, was really a license, wasn't a lease.
Third floor, where we had the tenants.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The, that was a, did you say that was a lease, not a license?
It's really, it's a license. It was only good for eight years each time.
A license. Uh huh. But that license is in good order currently?
No.
No, okay.
It, just, let's not quibble over whether it's a license or a lease. They, they were arrangements, written arrangements for a period of time.
Yeah.
And those have presently lapsed, right?
Yes.
I see, okay. And when the, and when, uh, Great Brook stopped harvesting, there, they continued for a while the use of the, or they've continued the use of the third floor for the tenants, but they've not been using the first two for their equipment or doing any bog work, right?
The equipment is in there.
I see, still there, okay.
And, and the, the farmer has continued to do things on the bog at the direction of the Conscom.
As part of the, uh, exchange.
Right.
Right.
So even though the growing of cranberries may have stopped.
Right.
But the farming or the work aspect has not stopped.
I see.
As I understand.
Okay.
That's correct. This, um, uh, maintenance of the bog that's ongoing, for example, um, this year, uh, Mark, at the request of the commission, you know, did work on ragmities removal and control, uh, in the bog. Um, there's regular mowing on the edges of the dikes and, and, uh, various other activities, clearing the flumes, things like that, that, uh, he continues to do. Yeah, and removal of pump house.
Removal of what?
Pump house, there was. Removal of old pump house. Because the agriculture.
Wouldn't call it a house.
No.
Pump container.
Want to be rude, but.
Old truck body.
Yeah.
Uh, we asked him to remove that this year and he did.
Okay. And so we.
Yeah, I, I was just going to ask if we had any more questions.
So I'm just trying to understand what our, what is our, uh, what would we like to accomplish tonight?
Well, we were trying to figure out what the status is of the bog house and the tenants and, um.
Okay, so it sounds like we need to, um, figure out if we want to renew the lease or agreement for the occupancy, excuse me, of the third floor. If that's something we need to address. And is that typically in the purview of the Conscom? Are you asking the select board to take some role there?
Uh, I, I, so that's a good question. I mean, it's in some discussion about the bog house and the municipal facilities committee. The, the, the truth of it is that, um, it was in the past the Conservation Commission and, um, it has not, uh, been at the forefront of, you know, our thinking on the bog, on the theory that what's working, you know, don't fix it. Um, and going forward, I think it's very important, however we resolve this, I think it's very important for the board to understand that in its present condition, it's not really tenantable.
Mm-hmm.
It only has value, um, you know, for, for the kinds of uses that it's presently put to. So if you want, and I'm just, you know, theorizing here, is if you want this to go out to bid and go through a formal process, a procurement process, um, you know, in the future, then it's gonna, it, the only bids you're going to get are on a quid pro quo kind of basis. Uh, and if you truly want to make it tenantable and leasable on an open market, you're going to have to spend quite a lot of money.
To bring it up to, um, reasonable occupancy standards.
Right. Um, and for, one thing, it doesn't have central heating systems.
Right.
In fact, if you were to contemplate that, you, you, realistically, it cannot go a winter without heat and it presently has no heating system.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So if we were to go down that route of some sort of commercialization, the very first thing that would have to happen is a $20,000 to $30,000 expense for a heat pump system to keep the building from falling in on itself, which is what happened when we abandoned it for three years. When we abandoned it for three years the last time.
Mm-hmm.
And we'd spent, if you may recall, over two hundred thousand dollars in the last seven or eight years. The town has repeatedly spoken, you know, we want this building, you know, another Highland building, I'm sorry. But, you know, they have spoken repeatedly that they want this building. To remain the what it is and. The master planning process repeatedly stated one after the other that agriculture, we're, we're supposed to support it. So here we are. Um, and as Alex pointed out, this, this has been working quite. It's been, I won't say quite well. It has been working for about, you know. Thirty years.
Yeah, it, it needs to be regularized. It can't be just kind of in the ether and like not documented and.
The, the, and that's, and that's a fair point, but I think you need to consider the consequences of, of that action, right? Because we could find ourselves. Making a twenty thousand dollar, thirty thousand dollar investment instantaneously if. We go down a particular route that bounces the people out. Which is basically what happened in nineteen, the summer of nineteen ninety, my first year on conservation commission. So. Yes, we can regularize it, but. Are, are you guys willing to authorize a thirty thousand dollar expense to put heat in there?
Well, we have to.
What it's gonna take.
This is what we have to talk about, and I do see David's uh hand up, so I'm going to call on David.
Thank you. Okay, so I have so many questions, but let's start kind of where we were just going. You have to help me. The. Fact that either Duffy or his son, and I'm not clear whether it's either both live there, quid pro quo, does that obviate the normal having a building that's to code? Is that what I'm hearing? That we wouldn't have to be to code if under this quid pro quo arrangement, whereas we would if we were leasing it some other way?
Well, got it.
There was some determination, and Steve may. Know this better, but there was some determination. In the early nineties that because it had been pre-existing.
Oh, grandfathering, this is more grandfathering in the tenant?
Grandfathering and.
Yeah.
If you change the tenancy on that, I have frankly no idea.
Yeah, okay, if you change the tenancy, but you, you, you're assuming if you don't change tenancy, it's okay, is what you're seeming to be saying.
That was the determination back in the early nineties.
Okay, so that's twenty years, thirty years old information. So I think at a minimum, we need a council, you know, review of that. Which dovetails into the next thing, which is the insurance liability of that thing. I've been told, and this is anecdotal, that, you know, because they don't have heat, they use, I don't know, kerosene stoves or some other thing that sounds like.
The pellet stove.
A fire waiting to happen. So again, it's similar to Greenell. It's not, I would push against Steve's ref. It's a little bit like Highland in that it's a solution in search of a problem. Well, actually, I wouldn't even say that. Highland is a solution in search of a problem. Which we have taken a sort of a, you know, kick the can down the road approach to preserve it at least temporarily, but not really let people in. This is the opposite. We're letting people in on something. This is more like greenout to me almost where. You allowed a tenant to live in a collapsing barn and you're saying, oh, you know, I hope nothing bad happens. So. That really concerns me a lot from a liability standpoint, and I think we need to get council's opinion on. Are we even on secure ground, even if we just continue the same? Um, you know, course of action, but then. You know, I hear the words that we're trying to preserve agricultural use, but in fact, the bog is no longer of agricultural use. Is that not correct?
So the agricultural exemption expired. Um, last year. I think what Steve is trying to say is that. Um, Mark uses the barn. To support his agricultural operations. Not only in terms of the maintenance of the bog, but in terms of Great Brook Farm.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right. So there is some agricultural thing. And in your opinion, is, first of all, does he reside there or his son or both of them, to your knowledge?
He does not reside there. Um.
Okay.
One of his sons.
Yes, one of his sons.
Yeah.
And what, the, the son that resides there, is that the son that's doing the maintenance and stuff?
Participates.
Okay.
In the maintenance. Mark does quite a bit of it himself.
Okay, but so collectively, the Duffy family puts in a certain amount of work and gets a free rent, right? That's kind of the basic economic equation?
Um. Ye- yes, and no. Yes, in that it's part of the quid pro quo. No, in that there is additional. Um, consideration in the form of a maintenance agreement.
Okay, well, which is expired, right? But um.
The, the, the maintenance agreement is annual. Um. And uh involves. The, the maintenance functions that we talked about with respect to the block.
Right, so I think we have a governance issue as well in terms of some third party, not us, maybe, I don't know how to do this. Should really look at the economics of what he and other Duffys are doing in exchange for. Getting paid versus getting some rent. I mean, I, I know, I think we owe some clarity to that, and I don't, I don't want to sound that aggressive like I'm sounding, but. I mean, I don't have any clarity about that and, and we owe the citizens, you know, I think the true economic picture of that. But I think my main thing, and let me ask one more uh exploratory question, is in fact, I saw these documents, but I apologize. I don't have command of the facts. Is the site or the building itself subject to historic preservation?
I believe so.
As in a registered, you mean it's a.
Yeah, well, it's a land, it's.
This is a historic site in Carlisle, yeah.
Okay, does that mean that we can't like take it down or we have to fix it a certain way? What does that actually mean?
Is here from the historic commission. Yeah, I don't know. Do you know, Ryan?
I don't.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so that's yet another question that we would need to have addressed, but. I mean, assuming there's some restriction on how we fix it, assuming we want to fix it and not just take it down like we are doing with Greenow. You know, and assuming that we are satisfied that, say, the economic. Equation is reasonable, let's just say, you know, I'm okay, I'm sensitive to that. I'm at the thing I started with, which is, you know, understanding actually what legally we are required to do as landlords, owners. And what our liability is and how we mitigate the potential for something bad to happen. So I, that's all stuff we need to see, I think, before we can, you know, determine what to do next. Thank you. I'll stop now.
Okay. I've got, I know you have other stuff, but I just have one question.
Wanted to recognize after you.
Just a quick thing. Um, so I'm looking at the packet that we received and under the land stewardship observations, I'm just a little confused. It says. The bog house includes two apartments, one studio apartment on the first floor and one three-bedroom apartment on the second floor. Are there two separate? Okay, and they're both currently under this quid pro quo agreement, so there are two, two people potentially or more living there. Okay, because when you described it, I'm, I'm just trying to get this in my head. So you said the bottom two floors were for the equipment and ag harvesting, but. Sounds like.
Okay, so.
The bottom, bottom is the ag equipment and then the next floor is an apartment or?
Well, the, the, the use, the agricultural use has evolved over time.
Uh huh.
Okay, so what I was describing to you or was attempting to describe to you was the state of. The arrangements in nineteen ninety-four-ish.
Okay.
When the farming aspects were separated from the um occupancy aspects.
Okay.
Subsequently, over a period of time, as presumably as Mark needed more farm help. He took a, a small section of what would be. Um, the second floor, which was the so-called screening room and enclosed um part of it and turned, made an efficiency apartment.
Okay.
And over time, that has been occupied. You know, by various folks and that supporting his marks, the Great Brook Farms, whatever's agricultural operations. I, I am not clear. If there's an occupant in the downstairs right now.
I have no idea.
Yeah, I, I, I believe. It may not be occupied.
Last year when we went with the MFC, Chris was there, his younger. Was he gone? Okay.
Yeah.
All right. On another farm, he's bought a farm out.
Oh, all right.
It, it, this, this is a dynamic situation.
Yeah.
That Mark uses to.
Yeah.
Implement his labor pool.
And have you all had any recent conversations with Mark about? Um, some of the concerns about the, like the heating and condition?
Not about, I did see him this morning about the, you know, the annual.
And you're speaking to the mic so that everybody can hear.
I did speak with him this morning about the um, this year's annual um. Maintenance agreement, but.
Okay.
Um, but. We haven't gone into depth at all about heating or.
Yeah.
I mean, the building is presently heated by a wood pellet stove.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Which does not belong to the town.
Right, no, but it, but it, so it's, it's, it's functions well enough that your concern about the winter, not having heat in it over the winter, that those pellet stoves are keeping it um.
Yes, and have for, for several decades now.
Okay.
The problem would be if no tenants.
Right, and those pellet stoves were gone.
And they were gone or. Unfired.
Right.
Either.
Right.
Then you return back to this.
Yes.
Collapse on itself state.
Okay.
Um, John, I promised you a couple of minutes?
Yeah, thank you, Kate. Um. I don't really know where to start. I have a lot to say, and you said keep it short, so I try to keep it short. Uh, first of all, there's no lease. Right, there's no lease between the tenants in the apartment and the town. None, zero. There hasn't been, as far as I can tell, and I've looked at all the town records going back to nineteen ninety. Uh, there's no lease where someone says. We're gonna pay this much in rent and we're gonna get this in return. Uh, there was a, uh, an attempt at a pick lease, a payment in kind lease. Around two thousand and eight to two thousand and ten. I have a copy of that. I just sent it to you guys. Uh, it was never signed. I've never seen a signed copy. Uh, the town administrator, the, the board of health, uh, conservation committee, nobody has a signed copy of that lease. It doesn't exist, apparently. There is a bog maintenance agreement between Mark Duffy and the town. Uh, this year, they're, the town is paying Mark Duffy twelve thousand dollars. To mow uh the, the, the trails at the cranberry bog. I don't understand why that doesn't go to the DPW. Um. The. Bog house, we bought it in nineteen eighty-five. In nineteen ninety, the conservation commission reviewed the property. There's, there's been a lot of problems, but they noted at the time. There was one apartment, the one on the third floor, if you're counting the, the basement floor as one, uh, which still exists today. That was the only occupied apartment. The, the ground floor and the first floor, if you will. Uh, were reserved for commercial use of the cranberry farm. It was not. Uh, what's the right word? Rated qualified for occupancy. It was rated for a commercial, commercial farm use. Uh, in two thousand and eight, John Minty did a, did a building inspection of the property. He, he. Noted at the time, oh, wait, there's actually two apartments that are occupied, and he insisted that, uh, we changed the addresses. For the building to seven fifty and seven fifty-two because there were two occupied spaces. Uh, he noted also at the time, the wood stoves that had been installed without permits, uh, that's never been rectified. Um, and the. Uh. Modifications to the first floor apartment to create the efficiency apartment were done off the record. There's no building permit. Um, no building permit, no grandfathered. It, the building is rated R-three, so I'm just gonna hit my points cake, so I'm trying to get out of here quick. So, uh, the building is rated R-three S-one. The R-three is for residents that held two or more uh dwelling units. The S-one is for storage in the basement. Mark is actively keeping farm equipment in the basement. There's an F-one rating for that. It's a higher risk than S-one. So, Kate, sorry, don't kill the bear of bad news. Don't shoot him, all right? So if you have a mixed-use building with a high risk and a residential rating, what do you need?
Yeah, is, is it the S-word, John?
Yes, it is, ma'am, sorry.
Sprinkles.
So, so Mark, somewhere between nineteen ninety, I'm looking at the letter from the conservation committee in nineteen ninety, November thirteenth. Uh, and two thousand and eight, on his own, without permission from the town, without a building permit, modified the downstairs apartment. To be uh habitable and occupied. Um, it didn't meet the code of any kind of code, and so when Minty went there in. Two thousand and eight, he had a long list of things that needed to be corrected in the building that resulted in the, in the. Cranberry Bog House Preservation Project in two thousand and eleven or two thousand and twelve. That's when I first became. Aware of the building because I was one of the contractors that looked at that progress, project. I didn't have a, a D-CAM rating that high enough to do that, so I had to pass. But uh, there, there was definitely two apartments there now. There's no license for it. So when we bought the property, I'm moving on, next point. When we bought the property in nineteen eighty-five, there wasn't a mandatory. Pedal five inspection on conveyance or transfer of property. That didn't occur until nineteen ninety-five. The septic system for this property, according to the board of health records, has never been inspected. So Warren noted in his Cranberry Bog House issues document from. I believe it was two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and seventeen or two thousand and eighteen, that the septic system is antiquated. So Mark by, by modifying the building to create the second apartment, change the occupancy load. Never got reported to the board of health because they would only react if there was a building permit, so they never inspected the system to see if it was adequate. Uh, the chances are that it's gonna fail inspection, but you never know. We might be lucky. Um. All right, so there's no lease of any kind. There hasn't been in ten or twelve years, and even then, the lease was very subject. There's no agriculture. Uh, the tenants aren't doing the work as some kind of quid pro quo. Mark's getting paid for the work in the bog, the mowing. Completely separate from uh his kids or whoever's living in there. No one knows who's living in there. Uh, and by the way, uh, because that's a Carlisle address, if they have kids, they have access to the Carlisle school system and all. The attributes of Carlisle, which isn't a bad thing if that's what the town decides they want to do, but it costs twenty-five, twenty-six thousand dollars a year per kid. To put them through the system. They're living there for free. They're not paying any taxes. I, I think it's a mess. There's a history of asbestos and pesticide storage in the building. Uh, it, it's not a hundred percent clear that that was ever resolved, particularly on the first floor. Where this new efficiency apartment is because the building inspector never got a chance at the time to go over it. And again, with the farm equipment in the basement, there needs to be a rated fire ceiling in there with a vapor barrier to protect the tenants above. Uh, John, Matevee and Brian went there, um, and they, they. Made a list of things that needed to be rectified. They didn't mention that one, but the rest of the list of things that need to be rectified is still open. I don't know that anyone's. Uh, done anything on them. I, I began in the copy of the nine documents I just sent the select board. That list is in there. Um. Okay, enough bad news. Stop, stop. So real quick, what I think, hold on, let me, let me, I, I, my bottom line is, I think the select board and the town really need to get their hands around this. They need to make a decision about what they want to do with the bog house. I know there's a lot of, lot of. Argument in town, the argument, uh, uh, hope in town that we can somehow come up with some affordable housing. Or some kind of alternative, alternative housing. The fire department wants someplace to put. or some kind of alternative, alternative housing, the fire department wants someplace to put guys like that. Uh, I think for a modest amount of money, if we could get all these things sorted out, there's a potential of three, three-bedroom apartments in that building. That'd be the most expensive solution, but, um, all of a sudden, boom, it's separable from, uh, the conservation land. There is a long list of, uh, liability and building department concerns that need to be addressed, I think David was on the right, the right track. Um, we need to look, we need to look through this and we need to do it, um, we need to do it like this was not the town that owned this building, but as a resident. No way will we have let a resident in Carlisle get away with what's going on at the Cranberry Bog House, it would never have happened. You're holding this, the, the residents of Carlisle to a much higher standard than you're holding yourself, and that's just not fair. That's it.
Thank you.
Jake Flannery.
Sorry?
Jake Flannery.
Yes. Oh, Jack, uh, you need to approach a, a microphone.
Jack Tross, one fifty-one Concord Street, I'm here for another matter, but since the question about the historical history or the historical elements of the building, um, I just wanted to weigh in on that. It is on the, uh, MACRIS report as an historical asset of Carlisle. I would suspect it falls outside the jurisdiction of the Historical Commission, but that doesn't mean the Historical Commission would not be concerned about, um, preservation of, of the building. Uh, the MACRIS study indicated that it is eligible for listing on the National Register as an historic property, which would, depending on different considerations, uh, make it eligible for, uh, funding grants and other things. Just wanted to share that, and the Historical Society, which is independent of the Historical Commission, uh, you know, obviously recognizes the importance of the building historically in the town, and, and I think the report pointed out, there's a lot of historical, uh, farm equipment in there in addition to the other for, farm equipment, so I just wanted to provide that perspective.
Jack, just so you know, I, in the packet I sent the Select Board, I included the Matt Chris, uh, report on the Bog House. It totally is eligible for, uh, addition to the, to the Federal Historic Register. That comes at a huge cost to the town, so it's not just can we do it? It's a question of should we do it, because that's gonna add, you know, three more zeros, so whatever the number is, we're working on.
I, I would agree, there's, it's a, it's a trade-off, right? But we tend to focus on eligibility in terms of historic, uh, you know, um, value, not necessarily advocating by any means, and thanks for pointing that out, that it should be listed. Right, it is a, it is a, can be a costly scenario, particularly for a building that size.
All right, um, we're going to move on to the dam because. Yes. Okay, can you come and, um, identify yourself, please, for the group and then?
I'm Warren Lyman, uh, while I am a member of the Land Stewardship Committee, I'm here for my own purposes. Uh, another sticky wicket you have to consider in this is Article ninety-seven, which requires that any town who wishes to convert conservation land to any other purpose jump through several hoops, requiring, uh, I think unanimous votes of the Conservation Commission, the Select Board, and requires compensation in if it's land that's being given up, uh, within, I think, a three-year period. Yeah, I think Town Council needs to read the new rules that were, came out within the last year, uh, dealing with conversion of conservation land to other uses, it's an important factor, thank you.
Thank you. Mind you, this is a building and not. Go ahead.
I think Warren is correct that we need to explore the underlying issues. If you're gonna separate off the Bog House with its land, then I think you're gonna get into Article ninety-seven issues. Um, I just, you, you know, we're not gonna resolve the future of the Bog House tonight.
Are you gonna try?
Oh, no, no, so, but I, but I, I think, you know, and I appreciate Mr. Labby's remarks, and I think in many ways, he's absolutely correct. Um, but it does come back to, what are you gonna do to realize any economic value from the property? Yeah, it could be converted, possibly converted into three separate apartments. I don't know if the septic system currently complies for its present use, I can guarantee you. It doesn't comply, you know, for three separate apartments. So talk about adding three zeros, and that's definitely, you know, what you're, what you're gonna be doing. So I, in, from my perspective, it comes back to, what is the value, the economic value that you can materialize for the town in its current condition? And I think the answer to that is close to zero.
Zero in its current condition?
Yes.
Right, okay. All right, Sylvia, can we move to the dam, because we already passed our time here, so.
Um, we have received.
He's keeping me on the hook here.
I love to hear yourself projecting.
Once the, uh, Greeno Dam was.
Look right up to the edge of the dam.
Once the Greeno Dam was, um, redone, uh, a fancy new spillway was put in place to take the place, uh, it has three sections to it, and it replaced a failed, um, spillway that was undersized to begin with. The new, in order to be compliant with, um, you know, flooding issues, um, the dam opening is lower and allows for more water to go through, um, the, the spillway than went through before. Uh, what, what happened before was because the spillway was in such poor condition, um, the beavers were allowed to do their thing in front of the spillway so that less water and even no water would go through, uh, so as to reduce, um, the damage that was done by the water going through, uh, mass wasting. So now, a lot of water goes through, and, um, I've had numerous complaints by people upstream, I mean, well, by people in the area, and also people who've lived in the area and grown up in the area, that the pond is a lot lower than it used to be or, or ever has been. And, uh, more importantly also, I've received a, uh, report from the state's, um, I need water, a waterfall biologist that he can barely get to, in fact, in some cases couldn't get to, the wood duck boxes that he's been able to get to since nineteen seventy-nine, which was only two years after I moved to town. Uh, but anyway, so we reached out, thank you, thank you. We reached out to the dam engineer about, um, adding a couple of slots to the outer two spillway, sections of the spillway in order to take a board to modestly raise the, uh, level of the pond, especially during the summer, when, um, the water would heat up and also be low. We wanna make sure we don't kill too many fish. Um, and the dam engineer has provided us a quote of eleven thousand eight hundred to provide the engineering change and also to modify, um, the, um, the emergency, uh, procedures and, and maintenance procedures for the bog. It's the operation and maintenance plan. Um, the question is, should we leave it like that all the time, or should it be managed? And I've, um, spoken with Bill Rizzo about this a bit, and also with, um, the DPW, and have an agreement that, um, the DPW would be, um, perfectly agreeable to managing in the summer or late spring and early fall the boards so that, uh, we could put them in, in the spring to have more water in the pond and take them out in the fall before, you know, real hurricane season starts, uh, to moderate and, you know, provide more water for, for the pond and the fish and the turtles and creatures that live in it.
You don't want the beavers to manage this?
Um, the beavers are not permanent, um, so. Um, the, the, um, when we got the, um, the report or the quote from the engineer, he was nervous that there might be, I guess, too many boards put in, and he was worried about the integrity of the dam, but there is no interest in raising the level of the pond high at all. It'd be modest, um, at the most, a foot.
I read his letter. Um, are there any questions from the board? David?
I just had a couple of comments.
Sure.
Um, so there, upstream, there are competing interests, of people who want it lower, people who want it higher, um, for, for different reasons. Um, when this issue came up last year, uh, in front of the Conservation Commission, was, you know, the worst of the drought, um, and the commission at that time wanted to explore the possibility, there was no decision to do this or not do this, just wanted to explore the possibilities, and so we asked Sylvia to get a quote from the design engineer, which she did, uh, Sylvia's more diplomatic than I, I, I think the design engineer resisted, um, providing that because, um, first of all, he thought the design was correct as it was, and secondly, um, he was concerned that there would have to be active management uh, if we, you know, pursued this, we asked him nevertheless to provide, uh, the quote for both, um, an updated operation management plan and for the design work. This quote obviously doesn't include the actual cost of the work to do it. Um, so that's where the commission is, the commission is not voted, yeah, we should do this, or no, we shouldn't.
The, the thought at the time was that we should provide this information to the Select Board for, um, your advice and, um, for it. Thank you.
Just a quick, um, you, you made a mention about some of the, um, butters or homeowners, you know, on the other side of the pond. It, are, have, has there been any conversation with them about this proposal, and is that something that they're comfortable with?
Are you, are you talking about the butters of the pond or people upstream from the pond?
Well, my recollection is that it was the people upstream of the pond, right, that had real concerns, yeah, before, so just asking.
We've had no complaints at all, um, since the spillway was installed. What we've had was fear that if we did this, that there would be flooding upstream.
Yeah.
But I monitored it pretty much all last summer, even the winter and in the spring, and the water just didn't get as high as it has been in the past, and I've received no calls from anybody upstream. I haven't sought out anything, but I haven't, usually what happens is that people let me know if they've got a problem, and I've.
Yeah.
I've driven along the streets specifically looking for whether or not people were flooded more than normal. I had gotten, uh, calls prior to the project when that spillway was blocked, and now it definitely isn't blocked, there's a lot more water going through there now than has ever gone through there before. Um, the biggest complaints I've gotten, or actually the only complaints that I've gotten, were complaints by people who are really worried about how low the water is.
Yeah.
Really worried, angry worried.
Mm hmm.
Um, and recently, one individual was threatening to go to Home Depot and get some boards to put in on his own. I encouraged him not to do that.
Yeah.
There, there was a group that, uh, I met with, and, and Sylvia was discussing that was concerned about the active management, essentially saying that the town couldn't manage enough to protect their property from the flooding. That person since moved, so we don't know how to get hold of that group, but I do believe that Sylvia and support Sylvia's plan for management and have trust that our DPW can manage the boards.
Mm hmm, they, they have said that they would manage it seasonally, and in the event of, um, an event that was, you know, unusual that would come, um, you know, maybe a hurricane in, in August, so you wouldn't expect to have a problem.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
So do we need, do we have a motion of?
I don't.
Of support, or how are we, um?
If the board is not ready to lend support tonight, then, um, I would ask that they consider it at their July twenty-fifth meeting because of the ninety-day nature of the potential fix quote.
Mm hmm, yeah. You wanna make?
I mean, do we need, is, is that soon enough, or do we need to take action ahead of that time?
The quote came on May fourth, for ninety days.
When is the time to do the work, though? Does it matter?
No, it's four. We'd still have to find.
We have time, I think we should take some time.
Okay.
Also because it's eight thirty and we have an eight fifteen that we haven't gotten to.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Definitely get a decision at our next business, regular business meeting.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Right, thank you. Center Park, uh, sign approval, I see Allison here, the mock-up. Uh, sorry, we're late, Allison, and I'm going to kind of.
I'll be fast.
Move you along.
I'm Allison Sailor, uh, president of Friends of Center Park, and this is the mock-up of the, uh, sign that we voted as a board to propose to the Historical Commission, and there's a certificate of appropriateness that modified it somewhat, but I can use and wig my arms around to show you it's very similar. This is forty-four by sixteen, and they have shrunk it to forty-one by fifteen. And instead of having a border around here, they've asked that we put a PVC frame around it, um, which will be embedded, it'll look like just a shadow, so instead of having this black border, it will be a shadow that we will have to have a craftsman make for us. The sign will be built out of PVC, which is this material.
That's AZAC.
AZAC.
Okay.
And it will be done by Evergreen Signs in Chelmsford. AZAC is the brand name, but it is PVC.
Okay.
Say PVC, um, because of the person, these will be vinyl letters, both sides, gonna hang from the oak tree sticking out quite high, because you wanna go above the foliage, hanging from the oak tree and the island in the middle, and it'll be for cars to see as they drive past, and hopefully they'll figure out that it's not burned overflow parking lot. Um, it will be hung from, and I have, it's all in the certificate of appropriateness, hung from a metal bar thing that is meant exactly for this to hang. I can, you can have them if you want to see them.
I have it up on the screen, too, Allison.
Oh, good. Yeah.
But that's not the one that will be, like, but they, when they made it thicker, they made it heavier, and so we'll have to go with a heavier duty one. So it's gonna look like that with a ball on the end.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
See the ball on the end.
Yes. Yep.
Hanging out, hanging out from the oak tree. And, um, so we're asking you to, we will follow this.
So it's actually going to swing. Okay.
It will be, uh, as I said, made out of PVC. It will be exactly these words, Carlisle Center Park. Public welcome on both sides, white, matte.
PVC.
Writing.
Okay.
And it will be paid for by the town. So we're asking Ryan to find a way to pay for it. Are there any other questions? In your pocket. Took a long time and lots of revision.
I am a little, um, I, I do have question about this frame. Um, because I did say some, they did say something like they wanted it routed in.
Yeah. In other words, it, it's going to look the same from both sides. It's going to be instead of seeing this black line on the
Yes.
put up, you will see the edge of this PVC.
Yeah, but that's a very large piece of PVC. I'm taking it. It's not that
It's only inch. It says it in all in the appropriate.
Okay.
Just, oh, look, just get a sense of what it is.
That's what I, that's what I'm asking you. Is that the actual side?
Line.
Piece of PVC.
That line.
Right, got it.
Going to be the shadow of the PVC.
Right.
Which will be, you know, like, just like a frame.
Right. Okay.
That's what they asked for.
And they're fine. They're all set with, um, I, the, so they're the revised certificate of appropriateness is what's in here.
Yes.
Packet. Okay. Great. So you worked all that out. I'm, I, I think this is a great looking sign and I'm perfectly comfortable. I should be speaking this way, perfectly comfortable with it. Um, it's nice to make it, uh, obvious that it's a, for public use.
I'd like to know how much it's going to cost at the end of the day before, um, which we do know, I think. We don't know yet.
No, we do know.
$250 for the sign from the sign maker and then another 250 to make the frame out of PVC. And then another about 150, but I didn't, we, I researched it several months ago, that hanging thing. So on that order, it's going to be under a thousand dollars, which I think compared to other signs that you do for towns, probably pretty darn frugal. But it is money that Friends of Center Park do not have. So we're asking the select board to sign the money. And I'll help do that. I'll work with Ryan to get the exactly right hanging thing to do the order. And I'll tell you exactly, it's the Barry Ohs who will do the frame and he's the one who made those lovely benches at, at Center Park. So he'll, he'll craft it well. And I guarantee the historical board will be there measuring to make sure that we make it exactly 41 inches. So we will be exactly what they asked for in this certificate. We don't want to do it again.
Do you have any comments, Ryan, that you'd like to add?
Um, I, I would be in support. I think wayfinding is important for the town, uh, especially given that most of our draw to businesses like Fern's comes from agricultural use and recreation use. So it makes sense.
Thank you.
Barney, have you?
Would you like me to?
No, I don't have any questions.
Let me just ask if David, you have any questions, comments?
No questions, Your Honor.
Okay, so we're going to have a, a motion.
All right. I move that the select board, uh, approve the, um, proposed Friends of Center Park, um, sign with the wording, uh, Carlisle Center Park, Public Welcome, as described in our packet. And
Second.
And that we approve the funding for such a sign at Center Park.
All right. Do your second, second part of that?
Second, second.
Okay. Uh, roll call.
Arnold, I.
Modell, I.
Rita. Thank you very much.
There you go. Thank you. Hey, thank you to the friends.
I'll be back to brag about other things we wanted to.
Okay. That's okay.
We're going to do a picnic table at some point.
All right. Okay. Thank you. Um, master plan implementation. Beck. And Julie.
Okay. And we have a PowerPoint for this, huh?
Yeah.
Excellent.
Yeah. And I'll just give a little context. Uh, so Jack Tross, Chair, Master Plan Steering Committee. Julie, thank you for joining me. Um, so Julie provided you with a memo, but just for the presentation, we were here, um, back in January, was it?
The end of January.
End of January. And there was a discussion about, um, the implementation of the master plan. Um, and that as part of that discussion, um, it was decided, uh, rather than, uh, appoint a steering, I mean, implementation committee, um, that it made sense, given the nature of the recommendations, the comprehensiveness of the report, and the expertise on, uh, town staff, that it should be a, uh, staff coordinated effort, uh, with, uh, boards and committees. And so we, uh, went away from that meeting and Julie, uh, came on board actually officially. And, uh, Ryan and myself, um, began this process of working with all the boards and committees. Um, I'm happy to say that, uh, the vast majority of boards and committees have provided feedback. The general spirit of it is please comment on anything that they want to comment about in the report, the 88 recommendations. Um, and also to identify priorities that they want to undertake. Um, going forward on a short-term basis and then, you know, basically continue to uh, interface with the recommendations in the plan. So that's the background. Um, and then when we came, I think in April, or I'm trying to remember, we had a second visit. Um, and I provided you with an update and one of the things that we talked about was a kickoff meeting. And so we do have some ideas about how to go forward, um, to reconnect, uh, with the community at large as opposed to the boards and committees. And so I'll turn it over to Julie, uh, to kind of go through it from there.
Yeah, sure. I don't know, Ryan, did you want to do your piece, you know, first or?
Uh, sure. So the, the things that we discussed, Jack, Julie and I, and then John's here, but digesting a lot of commentary from John. Doing my research on the, uh, the master plan process and what is needed for community engagement. We believe that the and, and I put this together for you. So I'll say I, and hopefully we all agree that the two big things coming are two big things that are needed are accountability for the plan. So this is to make sure that the plan is enacted. The select board has done a good job of integrating this in the goals. And I do think the staff is taking this and the boards and committees in town are taking this seriously. So a quarterly report, as Julie has put together, uh, based off of assigning these items to boards and committees to make sure that someone championing each of the 88 recommendations and seeing how many we can get through. And to be very candid, many of these are already ongoing. We are doing, uh, and engaging with the master plan without the kickoff. However, the, the public engagement piece is very necessary. So there was some talk in the beginning about a, um, a kickoff, like a Super Bowl event. And I think we'd made it St. Patrick's Day and then it was going to be Cinco de Mayo. And now here we are in, in June. Uh, we didn't want to compete with Route to San Pablo today and an old home day. And then the summer is the time for the least amount of public engagement. So looking at a fall event. And then we were talking about how can we make the public engagement useful and necessary? So what we didn't want was to, to relist the plan and talk about accountability and then have everybody leave the meeting. We really wanted to try and encourage this idea of engagement. So, um, tying that to what the select board has been discussing recently, we, we do believe and recommend that uh, the town should host in some form, I'm saying a a variety of listening sessions or engagement sections that, that allow the select board to see uh, public input and engagement with each of the big questions that you've been tackling to try and gain that input while also informing and helping with the master plan. So that's sort of the big idea. And Julie's worked on a lot of the details. Um, what I have here is what I just said. Plus, um, examples of the big questions. Of course, these are to be decided by the townsfolk and the boards. It's meant more as an example, not as an exact list, uh, based off things that the select board talks about all the time. And then the memo details, uh, much of this. So what we're looking for is your questions about implementation and your guidance on what the next steps are. And we are highly recommending that we do set some goals in terms of implementation, uh, before we head into the budget season and get taken over again.
Julie, you want to elaborate a little more about your memo or?
My memo is the most boring part of this presentation, but, um, it basically kind of outlines a structure for how I envision organizing things. Um, and how I envision, um, like the accountability piece happening. Um, so and if you want to scroll down a little bit, Ryan, like this, the first page is kind of an overview of the, the different, um, entities that provide a feedback to me. It was pretty much everyone. Um, and then actually at the top, I kind of note a couple of things that we've done in terms of outreach, like since we were last here. Um, but yeah, if you scroll down to the next page, Ryan, um, so the way that I envision this is, um, that each boarding committee will pick one or two goals for each fiscal year, um, and, and hopefully in coordination with other boards and committees. Um, you know, and starting with the short-term or near-term goals. And then, uh, you know, in coordination with me so that I can help the, the different entities that need to be involved in the discussions, make sure they're all connected. Um, and then what I'll do, and I've started setting this up, if you scroll down a little, Ryan. Um, I'm proposing that we kind of manage this through the Microsoft OneDrive share file system. So it's similar to Google Drive, but, um, it's something that the town has a little more control over. And, and this just here is to show like what the file structure looks like. And so I, I separated it out into the categories. Um, and then if you click on each category, you can go in and you can see the goals in that category or the recommendations in that category, broken down by near-term, short-term, um, all the way through done. And then if you click into one of those, you can see more specifically what the recommendations are. And I put, what I put is the lead entity. So like the first one um, is underscore PB, which is planning boards. That's the lead entity. And so, so this is the way that the, um, a representative from each of the committees that's involved in each of these recommendations would have access to this share file system and then town staff would as well. So we can put documents in there for everyone to review and then they'll have an overview document that they can update as they make progress. Um, and the, the kind of leaders of the charge will be able to, um, coordinate that efforts through that and coordinate with me and I can keep track of things. Um, it's, it's imperfect for sure and incomplete. And I'm sure I'm missing some things, but, um, this is just in general, how I envision trying to coordinate this like enormous undertaking. Um, and simultaneously I'll continue to update the spreadsheet because I know some people like to see things that way as well. And I, I kind of, I'm a visual person and I like spreadsheets. I like them both. So, um, I don't think.
And I would just so sort of summarize and then take questions, but it's it's the view of this process, Ryan, Julie and myself, and thank you, John Valentine, for some of your feedback, much appreciated. That this is both a governance matter in terms of the coordination with the boards and committees and the select board, which was one of the, not one, but within several of the issues identified as part of the master plan, that coordinated governance. But then it's also remains a community document. So it's back into the community with a kickoff meeting. If we want to still call it that, and then a series of other kinds of conversations around these big questions so that the community gets back engaged in the dialogue. And then that information, you know, is fed back into the process. But that's the, that's the recommendation, uh, of the implementation, uh, effort on behalf of, uh, the administration, uh, town administrator planner, working with the committee.
Yes.
This, what we're asking, so I'll speak now of staff and not implementation working group member here, um, is that is that our town leadership understands that the, the master plan is not a prescriptive process. It doesn't tell us exactly what we need to do. There are many items that are very easy for us to understand and do the low hanging fruit. But it, it invites a larger conversation and more public input for answering the bigger questions. So there of the 88 recommendate, and there are some, to be shocked, but some in Carlisle that like processes. Of the 88 recommendations, there's no way that we'll, we'll do all of them and, and some of them won't make sense as we progress through the master plan. But we cannot do some of them without some answers to these bigger questions. So we need input from, from leadership and the community, uh, in order to shape this, make this document more effective. So I think some people see a master plan as, as, you know, a
laid out.
GPS, right? And it's more of a, it's more of a roadmap.
Yeah.
And it, it needs to be filled in with, with specific directions.
Yeah. Did you have something you would like to ask?
Well, uh, not so much, well, a comment and then a question. Um, so I, um, I, I really agree with the direction you're heading in. Um, it, it makes a lot of sense to me. And as someone that was very involved in the development of the master plan, um, I think we always saw it as a roadmap guidance and that it was going to take a lot of, um, input and engagement for, for us to move forward on it and that, that things would change as, as we move forward. Um, I I I think the cha, the cha, a big challenge of having, uh, some kind of a single event is, um, you know, how, how do you reach deeper into the community for the engagement part? Are you?
No, no, so just a sidebar. So it's, it's a series of events.
Okay.
And the kickoff is really just to reconnect with the community. We're thinking possibly survey, you know, mail or back. Included, you know, we've acted on four recommendations. The select board has adopted 22 recommendations as part of their planning process. You know, just sort of that update and we, and we provided that flyer, um, at some of the events.
Yeah.
This would go out to everyone and we, we would engage.
Yeah.
That would really just bring everybody back together to say, there are these big questions as Ryan go, you know, demonstrated with, with some examples. But we also want to follow up with some specific, uh, individual events. So one of the ones that came up, and I just use this as a hypothetical, Ju, is Julie's, uh, idea. Okay, maybe you don't want me to say that, but just the idea, uh, town center as community center. What does that mean? You know, get people, invite people to come in and talk about that. Another one is, you know, fiscal, um, planning for the future.
Mm hmm.
You know, what do people think, uh, about taxes and where we're going? And John has a lot of ideas and, and experience with being able to describe, you know, different tolerance level, levels and so on, and based on population growth.
Mm hmm.
So it would be those uh, individual issues that would enable us, Barney, to get mu- much deeper into those conversations and, and document that feedback.
Yeah, that sounds great. Uh, I think that makes a lot of sense. I guess uh, the, um, the timing of all of this, that's probably one of the really tricky parts. Um, both because, I mean, if you think about the master plan and how long it, you know, how much time we spent on gathering information. Um, those, um, kitchen conversations ran, we originally said they were going to go six weeks and then we ended up going about three months, uh, to, to do all of those. But, uh, generally, um, I think this uh, approach makes sense. And, um, I guess the question is, so sounds like though what we need to zero in on, uh, fairly soon is what are those topics going to be? Um, and, and then figuring out who, you know, I mean, the who, who will take responsibility for, um, um, generating some information that you look at ahead of time to and, and then, and then the outreach plan for getting people to come, uh, so that we, ideally we And, and then, and then the outreach plan for getting people to come so that we ideally we get beyond the. Usual group of people that come to things here in town. But I'm, I'm very supportive of this approach and I mean, I'd be happy to also be involved in helping with. With some of the outreach and, you know, planning.
And I think that would be the idea of the kickoff would be to indicate what some of the future. Events would be and, you know, even get initial feedback on that. But to your point, we would need to line up. You know, fair amount of preparation ahead to know how we're going to go forward.
Are you thinking that these big questions get? How do you see those getting refined and? Sort of agreed upon and does all that happen before you have the kickoff of it? Or do you use the kickoff as a way to? Sort of assess. Whether people agree that with whatever the list of priorities are, and you might modify them based on what comes out of that event.
I think that's right. I mean, I think we would, the idea that we've discussed and Ryan and Julie, please bump in, what we've discussed is. Come up with, you know, a number of topics. Get feedback. If there is a clear. You know, response that certain. Discussions are more important than others. As you said, Barney, what's tricky always is, and that's why we talked about the survey. And what's tricky is always. The possibility that you have an event and only certain, you know, loud voices, you know, want to weigh in on it. So I, I think it will require, you know, some kind of connection with the broader public. In that process and Julie had said possibly survey first, but you can.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think based on what I've done in my past experience is before I've had like a big public forum, I've usually put out a survey. To get feedback and then, you know, at that forum, kind of go, go through the survey results and kind of get. Hone in on like specific questions that might come out from those survey results and kind of get consensus or. You know, from the group about is. Like we kind of ratify the survey results and is this the way we want to go forward? I mean, I think. Like these example big questions would need to be refined to some degree before we can figure out what we're exactly asking in a survey, but. You know, in my, in my mind, we would do the survey and have it open all summer and then. You know, give people plenty of opportunity and, you know, post it in every possible location and. You know, send it, we could send it in the mail, we could put it in the mosquito, we can QR code it, we can put it on the website, we can have it everywhere. Give people plenty of time to respond and then try to take it, understand it and bring it to some sort of. Kickoff or some sort of series of events in the fall.
It would be our third survey in the sense that we've already done two, one on the. On the general goals. And then we did Barney, as you recall, we did the second survey and Kate and book, which was more specific on. You know, what are your views on housing? What are your views on the financial questions and? I know John. Has a lot to think about and possibly say about the survey. So we would. Which we would, we would tap into his knowledge. But yes, I, I think that's the general notion.
Let me just bring David into this for a second. David?
Yes. Yeah. Hi. Thanks. All right. So lots to cover here. So as Ryan alluded, some people like process, right? I don't know who that is, but I think we. I feel like we're diving into mechanics and we should take a step back. So what I'm. You know, let me go back through a little bit of history and then kind of where we're at. So the, you know, the master plan. Committee did a great job, huge survey, kitchen table conversations, lots of data, blah, blah, blah. We got 88 recommendations. We met, you know, as a board, I don't know, it's a year ago, maybe a year and a half, two years ago. I can't remember now, maybe it was two years ago. But we started to, you know, we started to jump in on this and. Gave our imprint and basically in the chart is later in today's meeting is kind of the byproduct, which really was our priority setting, which we're about to. Go through again. Trying to tie our priorities and that is to say town government priorities to. This master plan and, you know, be consistent. So we did that. We, we kind of divvied some of it out to the relevant boards and committees. We divvied some out to the town manager. It was a different town manager then. Ryan and Julie and so forth have embraced it, taken on a lot of initiatives. A lot of committees have embraced it, taken on a lot of initiatives as had been mentioned. Julie came on, she's giving more clarity, more structure, which is great. I thought the piece that you guys developed for town meeting was the best, you know, piece of collateral for town meeting was really great. But I'm still back now. So here we are. And I do worry a little about survey fatigue, but I'm willing to say, okay, you know, maybe. Going back and examining the balance between. Community input, community priority setting. Select board. Priority setting. And then the flow down. From select board to the committees and then the specifics that they might do, like that balance could be. Recalibrated, you know, we could use a survey perhaps. We definitely should have a kickoff meeting. It's incumbent on, I think us, the select board to. Do, you know, take this lens for the meeting. We're going to have a meeting in two weeks is our first of two strategic planning meetings. So. Very appropriate, I think, for us to take this and. Reexamine our old list and, you know, see what's different and adjust it. But I do worry. That we're jumping right into the mechanics. And I do worry. That. Kind of just giving. Unbridled, unfenced direction to. Both the public and to the boards and committees, we're going to veer off in different directions, which. May or may not be consistent with the way the select board looks at things. And it's not that the select board. You know, is the be all and end all of like priority setting, but it is basically our job, I think, to set. The top level strategic priorities and then flow those down to town government and to the boards and committees. We should take the input of the. You know, of the community, of course, I mean, it's critical and a very valuable function. So, so on the backend, I just want to finish on the backend, the. Implementation, tracking, documentation, I think it's all great. I love. A consistent taxonomy of folders. I'm a big believer in that. That'll be a big surprise to, to Ryan, but. You know, I love the way Julie's approaching it. So I think all of that backend is good. And then there's the very, the last piece, which is the middle, which again goes back to select board is once priorities have been set. There's a resource allocation prioritization, which again is back to select board. So. I guess what I'd like to understand a little more in all of what I've said is. With the lens of select board setting its priorities in the next month, let's say. And understanding that we've done a lot of work already to set the stage with 88 recommendations in five buckets. What is it specifically? We seek from the public to inform us. And then Jack and Julie's view. Of what I said, which would be to me, take that input folded into select board. Gathering and then. Back to have the interchange at the board and committee level to make sure that we're all. Basically on the same priority and then certainly. How they implement and all their suggestions would be part of that. So I'm sorry for being long, but. You know, it's, it's all one big piece. Thank you.
David, it just seems to me though, when I'm looking at these example big questions. The overall tax tolerance for future improvements. I don't see how the select board can make prior, you know, can prioritize some of these things and even, you know, if we don't know what the tolerance of the town is.
Well, I'm saying, no, but, but Kate, excuse me, but that's what I said. I think, I do agree. I think that. I mean, there was this little interchange before I spoke about whether, you know, what comes first, like the community engagement, the survey, the survey of the survey, the. You know, I, I agree. I think that we should. Recalibrate with the town. Like, hey, we've done all these things. Here's where we are and let's revisit these things and get some input. I'm all for input. What I'm not for is, let's say that survey says. We're taxed to death. No more taxes, you guys. We don't want taxes. Then we shouldn't be off tilting at windmills on all kinds of special projects.
Well, that's exactly why I would like to have that information.
Right. But this, this whole, but, but 75% of this dialogue, well, maybe 50% of this. Last, you know, 20 minutes of dialogue has been about. Boards and committees putting documents in folders and da, da, da. It's at board and committee level and I'm. I'm, I'm raising my hand to say, you know, wait a minute. Community input to select board, select board work with the boards and committees, including master plan. And let's make sure that. We stay consistent. That's kind of what I'm.
Okay. Well, I guess I read it a little differently. I, I, I think I did read, you know, community input and then the board makes his decisions and then, and then.
Well, I didn't hear that, but I'm happy to hear it from Julie or Jack.
I think, I think that's a good observation and, and one second, John, and, and. I, I do think that's more or less the picture we're painting. I think in terms of the boards and committees, just to be clear and to clarify, by the way, David, the, the. Report was approved or accepted by the planning board in April. Of last year and, and I think the select board took it up in your planning process of last year.
That's correct. Right.
Just to put the timeline out there.
Right.
And so I think.
So we're in year two, we're only coming into year two now, basically.
And, and the. And so I think I agree with your observation and Kate's clarification with respect to the community. I just would say that the, that the boards and committees piece that's. That's in is that piece that's kind of trailing. What happened last year. With the select board's priorities and the initial issuing of the report. So it's just kind of that pushback on the, on the first 88 recommendations. The first iteration, if you will. Not. Asking the, the boards and committees to weigh in on specific things. That. The community has not already, you know, only what the community has taken up to date, not what the community might take up in this other process. So anyway, I, I don't know if John.
Sounds confusing to me, but okay.
Maybe, John, you can clarify it if you want further.
John Valentine, 268 Fifth Street. I, I guess I want to sort of talk about two things, sample bias issues, which are huge here in terms of surveys. And sort of the longer term financial and facilities plans, which we all have kind of, we've outlined. But we, and the town may or may not have absorbed what that means and what's going on and their estimates about what that is. The challenge. As we go forward and saying, oh gee, there are these facility needs, which are going to mean X number of more square feet. And a certain amount of dollars that are going to have over the next five, 10 years. Is that's hard for people to get their arms around, even though we've outlined it in the plan, we've had certain indicators of that. And this is where the sample bias problem becomes. It's very significant when you just have a small group of people who come to kitchen, kitchen table conversations or other things, which you got a survey sample of 500. Where people are committed and engaged. We do know when an override vote comes, comes up and we're going to have that with the fire and police, we're going to get 3,000 people voting for that. And that's going to be the true indication of where the town sits on taxes and what we go forward in. In terms of, you know, figuring out what projects make sense or not. So this becomes, I think, the huge dilemma. We've got the, you know, the, the, we've got this confirmation bias of the four or 500 people that have been engaged in the. Strategic plan and master plan and have a sense of what, what's going on there. And we have 2,500 other voters who are going to finally vote at certain points when we put forward financial proposals. Beyond town meeting. So you have the town meeting group, which is maybe two, 300. We have whoever's involved in the master plan and responds to Julie's survey questions. And then you have this whole real dilemma. Is gee, we're trying to get beyond the one year warrant article to thinking longer term to our facility needs. And this is where I think David's, you know, point is how do we present, here's what we see as our needs. This is how we define them. How do people? How are people responding to those needs? And we had, and it's really a calibration issue. It's a judgment issue and you say, yeah, we really need something for COA. Well, how many people feel like the COA needs more space or not? Again. So, and we could go through all these things and we've got our own opinions and perspectives on them and we feel strongly about them. But is that the temperature of where the people are in the town? And it's not just the town meeting vote. It's when we have, you know, the override votes, which most of these will be dead exclusion. And I, and I tend to, as you know, focus more on the. Number side, but that's the, that's the, that's the challenge and it's not simple.
Right. But the master plan set forth some baseline numbers and, and those can be challenged, but it was, you know, I'm looking at it is exhibit K on page K7. 35 to 42,000 square feet, including the police and fire, $30 million. That was. An assessment that was put together as part of the master plan. Now. We could be testing that. I think that's what we're saying. You know, giving that a test. We, what, what does 30 million mean over a period of years? In terms of cap X and, and, and what's the right square footage? We may find out that the master plan was way under on some of these estimates. You know, and, and or over, obviously. So there is the baseline in the report. You could say, well, you know, maybe you have to hire consultant and do a formal study. But. We talked about that and we were sort of questioning whether that's the, you know, not the way to go, but rather go to the community. Get the feedback. Use this baseline information as the test case and then go from there. But I, I think that, I mean, Ryan, I don't know if you have any other thoughts, but that's kind of where we came out was. Start with what we have in the master plan.
Yeah, it's some, so. We, we have conversations as a select board about. What is the capacity, right? I've been asked that and I've been calculating, calculating and. We'll have some numbers for the select board to digest at their goal session, but the. And then the public, of course, but the, the question really is you, you have to pick. What, what you're going to buy in order for me to properly and all of us to properly calculate. At some point you have to make, make a decision. So the. If you ask me, what can we afford? Well, are you going to buy the fire truck? Are you going to fix all the plans? Do you want a community center? Those are the questions that we need to know. And then it's a very easy, like anybody can do the math. Like what needs to be decided is. What do you want to do?
That's a good example, Ryan, and, and the master plan very carefully did not. Recommend a community center on the basis that as a standalone building, based on. What we saw as the issues and we got feedback on a pushback on that and, and it's in the, it's in the report. You know, the reccom was critical. You know, other groups, but the master plan said, we have to recognize these needs. There is a need for. Recreation space. There is a need for community center space. There is a need for cultural council, council on aging. But. It wasn't recommended in the master plan as. Promoting the idea of a community center. So we kind of tested that question, but. It may need to go back out, as you said. To the question of whether that's really where people are or whether they feel like these needs can be met. In some other formulation of use of town assets.
Or, yeah, or if, you know, gee, it's really, really nice until they see the price tag and they say, oh, you mean, it's going to cost me? Well, maybe I don't really need it that much, you know? So I think it's almost more than saying, well, it's going to cost the town 20 million. I think what we have to do is put it in terms of. It'll cost the individual taxpayer X a month, a year. That would make it more real and bring it home to people as to whether they really want this or not. And I, the, the other. Piece of that for me is. You know, if you, if you. If you have discussions on each, say each of whatever the key topics are. And say one is, you know, a community center or not. You're going to attract the people that really want that, right? So you. So I think one of the challenges is, and this is where you have. You know, kind of a good tension between. Those that have more information that have been, you know, really involved in this, both staff and townspeople. Having some concepts, having some vision about what could be. And being able to. Give that enough flesh that people that can, can look at. Some different possibilities, but we make them look at it as a whole package as opposed to. Pulling people out to, to sort of for their particular concern. particular, um, concern.
I, I agree, Barney, and I think that what we've said is, this is sort of a conversation, these particularly these more fine-grained conversations are ones that have visual, um, images, not just like exhibit K, which kind of puts you to sleep because it's just a whole list of numbers, or even the financial model, which John did a great job and Carrie, but it, it will also have visual, uh, elements to it, which we talked with Julie about to say, what, what could it look like if you were to walk through it? Um, and get people's reaction to that. And we know, quite frankly, because it was studied, what it would look like with a community center, at least one concept.
Yes.
On Banta Davis.
Yes.
So it's kind of that same idea. What would some other concepts look like?
David, your hand is up. Is it still up, or did you?
Yeah, no, no, it's up again. So I, I get concerned here, because I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm hearing, I'm hearing from Barney, if I understood correctly, you would say present either trade-offs, A, not if A, then not B, or some package A, B, and C, but not D, E, F. Let me just ask Barney, is that where you were going with this?
Yeah, or, yeah, something. I mean, I'm still sort of thinking through how you do this without saying.
But that's very difficult, right? That's, that's like the challenge we have in our budget. Let's just talk about it. Like, let's talk about what we just finished, which was the budget for twenty-four. I mean, it was a better process than it's been. We had more data than it's been. We would all agree, Ryan probably would agree the most, that the capital side was the weakest piece, which this is really a lot about that. And the problem is, there are so many trades to be made. So, um, I, I fear a little bit that we're going into gathering more data. I would, let me say one more thing. I, um, John mentioned, um, I mean, yeah, John mentioned, um, sample bias, and I would say it's not really sample bias, it's squeaky wheel syndrome, right? It's that, sample bias is where you tend to support things that support your own point of view, I think. But, um, this is the people who stay involved, get the voice, and they make their case the most regularly. So we've gone through a lot, and I kind of feel like we've got data. We have all the survey data. We have all the work of the boards and committees in the town for the last year. I'd like to see us as a select board, and I'm welcome, you know, Jack and Julie and John and Ryan in this part of the process for us to take a look at what we thought were the priorities last year, which is in the chart, you know, that we're supposed to work on, and any new data that we have, but not go through a whole thing, and let's refine that, and let's see where we have to be for the next year. I see in Julie's, you know, framework, next steps, continue to build out the organizational framework, that's great, you know, but outreach to boards and committees, but, you know, the priorities have kind of been, it's for us to do that. So I, I really feel like we should just take a breath. We should lead because we're supposed to do that. And let's just not try to do this every year. Let's make sure we're clear on what we've set out to do and where we are in that. There's a bunch of things, like the ESC has a whole pile of things they want to do. You know, we have to work through each of these issues, house to house, with our own budget that we passed in mind, because we've gone through this just a couple of months ago. And, and yes, we should have a kickoff, and yes, it should reflect that process. And in that case, we should debate some of the issues, maybe preparing for twenty-five. It just, you know, we don't really need more data. We just need to, I think we need to tighten up our process, and it's going to come down to the money. So sorry to be, you know, different on this, but.
There's, there's three, three examples from my very short time here, and I understand how, how short it is. So, um, sustainability, which was just mentioned, has been fully supported by the board, the master plan, and all committees, but has not, has not been defined. And I think the conversation in the public is, here's, here's what our vision of sustainability is going to cost. Do, do you or do you not want to trade that with, with, with other priorities? Because that, that's been said on the board, but not, not in detail. The, the second piece is, uh, you had a conversation, and we're going to have it, I hope, tonight about, um, public safety. A comment was made by a select board member last meeting that, um, accreditation might be too expensive a goal. I'm not, I'm not sure that that has any, any data or public input to it. And then when discussing the facilities, um, earlier in this year, it was, it was said that we should just focus on the police and fire and get those done, because if we open up the town center conversation, it would invite, uh, too much into the process. I think those are three places where the select board has, has said and needs more input in order to get over the hurdle and make a call. And I don't blame the select board. I don't think that there's been any mistake there. I think that's every community, small community in, in Massachusetts is struggling with those. So what inputs would the select board need in order to be comfortable with the, the seventy-five percent solution that's going to come from, from the money that's available? Is what the point of these, these community engagement sessions should be. And that can come from your goal session. You know, if you talk about facilities and you say, here's, here's what we think is the priority, boom, 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 boom. Now discuss that and, and hear from the community, do they agree?
Just being an economist and numbers person, I see this as a little bit more simple and straightforward, and that, you know, and from a strategic, from a three to, three to ten years sort of, uh, planning standpoint, you've got, let's say, twenty to twenty-five million of debt capacity at some assumed debt level, and that's, and that's the, at some assumed tax level. And we've assumed basically kind of keeping a tax level relatively stable to income, uh, we, in the master plan, um, going forward. Now, people may be willing to spend more. We don't know that. We've known that they did for the schools. We suspect that for the fire and police, there's going to be pretty strong support of that, because that's been going on, this conversation has been going on for five years at least. Um, but these other facility needs have not been out there in part of, um, you know, um, the conversation, except maybe the COA. And so the question is, how do we, how do we, if we have, you know, X amount of dollars that we think we can spend on capital going forward, and we, you know, we can, you know, obviously refine that, but it's going to, it's probably between five and ten million over the next ten, fifteen years. How do we figure out what those priorities are? And that, I think, is the toughest part. And how do you get that feedback? And, and this is where we all make our own judgment, and it's not simple. And, uh, Dave, the sample bias is really the issue of the, the real vote is at the Warren, at the ballot box.
Yeah.
So it doesn't, it's okay if all the town meeting and all these other people show up, but it's, we need to know, how, how do the three thousand people going to feel about a various override capitalized? And I just, and that's just one focus. There are lots of other things to look at. And that's not simple. I mean, I think we all have our own opinions of what seems to make sense, but how to make it, how to get that calibration is not simple. And maybe by presenting three or four that we think are the priorities, and this is what we think they're going to cost. I think concreteness helps people decide rather than just abstract. And that's the, and then we always get nervous about being too concrete, of course.
Yeah, well.
I, I would like to say with capital, in particular, why I'm so focused on it in my recommendations, is every year you wait, you lose capacity for capital because of the, the, the cost is increasing faster than our revenue. So if this takes two or three more years, you can take one of those buildings right off the table, and that's, that would be a shame. So there is a trade-off between getting the perfect plan and getting something done.
Yeah, yeah.
Which is why we started with the, um, safety, public safety, because I think that was non-negotiable need, it's not a want, that's a need.
And, and just to clarify, John, when you say five to ten million, you're saying, you're saying after deducting the likely expense of the police and fire, correct?
And five to ten doesn't buy you community center.
No, and that's why, that's why the master plan, you know, the position that it did, I think, in part, not in full.
That, and that's why we have to look at other options as well. And, and even when we're planning our police and fire, um, plan for some community spaces in there as well. That might be like this room, which has, used to be only a meeting room, which is now much better used, utilized. Um, it's now a, a real community space. So I think we're going to have, and I think, was that you're coining the community center as a community space? I'd like to adopt.
Town center as community center. I think Julie's onto something.
I think this should be, I think, is, it sounds like a wonderful concept, and that we should be exploring it. I think that might be what, that would be the solution to a number of our issues and, and needs and wants, and affordable. Okay. Thank you.
Any other, okay, sorry.
Conclusion, right?
But we're going to proceed as recommended. Is that, I mean, I'll, I'll turn it back to the select board.
Well, it sounds like we're in agreement about a fall event, and, uh, we're in agreement that the select board needs to do some work at our first strategy session.
Well, we, we, we've planned to.
Right.
Um, master plan, top of mind when we did our goal setting this year. So, um, and so we will fold all this information in as well when at goal setting, because maybe we'll have a goal around, you know, this.
Yeah, I mean, what would be, um, extremely useful for me, anyway, we have, uh, two weeks, right? Uh, since Julie and Jack have done all this work, if you could, I don't know, I didn't see, it's not in the packet, but maybe a document that, or whatever you've got running right now that shows the progress on the various fronts. You mentioned some, you know, we've taken on some town, we've taken on some, and if you guys could put together some document that we could use in our planning session, because that, we can take the document we made, you know, a year ago, the master plan, the document we made a year ago, and then the sort of summary piece, I think we can use that to really get very far ahead on this, you know, next session, because that's most of what we're going to spend our time on.
Yeah.
I don't do, I don't want you to do a lot of extra work, but to the degree you have it documented.
Right. I think, uh, Julie and Ryan and I can talk about that, but I think it's those, the two key exhibits that I would ask the, um, select board to take a look at again is exhibit K, and I'm drawing it, and L and K. That's the financial model, which is out twenty years, and the, uh, facilities. I think those would be really.
Okay.
Good discussion.
Yeah, okay. I, I, I got that. We'll do that, but I mean, I want to make sure I understand that I've articulated my ask, which is what's been done? What are, what are the various efforts that are ongoing and been done? Because that's part of what we, we definitely don't want to derail things that are in process.
Yeah, we don't want to stop something that's already on the track, right? And it's, oh, well, oops, you know?
Yeah.
I think that's relatively easy, Julie, for you to report out on that we've got, I think, four done and fifteen and.
It might be more than that now.
Yeah.
That's old data.
Good.
Okay. I mean, I'm happy to sit with you guys on, you know, the spreadsheet that's in the packet later in the meeting, if we won't really get to it, but by reference, which is our strategic planning guidance, that's an Excel sheet that I made, and I could easily, you know, work with you guys to figure out how to move those two. So we can provide the select board with the update, basically. That will be the basis for, you know, at least the piece of our strategic planning that says, how do we do what we said we would do, right? Thank you.
And I think we're also in agreement to move ahead with the framework you're talking about for OneDrive. That makes a lot of sense. Uh, the only thing I think out of your next steps part was, um, outreach to lead boards and committees, rate priority setting for fiscal year twenty-four. We can't really discuss.
That will happen after our, our goal setting. And we're going to push those goals out to the others as they relate to them.
Okay.
And then us, ask them also for their goals as relate to the, um, master plan that they submit to us.
Yeah.
If they don't.
So that will happen after, you know, say, yeah.
I think that was your.
In August, yeah.
Really, right?
Yeah. Yeah, that seems, seems right to me. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. We're going to move on.
Thank you.
Julie's not going to move on, but, yeah, so you guys.
Julie.
Julie's night.
And, um, if Soros, if you want to join Julie, I don't know. Uh, I'd like to take a vote tonight about the public safety facilities study, scoping discussion continuation.
Is there a motion in here?
Uh, no, okay.
Discuss.
Well, see if we, we can come up with one. Yeah, well, it would be to go ahead and do that, you know, right?
So the, the details to this matter, and I, and I expect questions, but the, what, what I would summarize as the asks here are to allow me to engage with, uh, TBA vetting all legal processes and procurement processes in order to, um, get, to get what this document is saying, which is, um, something to vote on. And then the, the second piece would be to, um, to explore or procure a conceptual design for the fire department. So those are the two. So they're, they're a little different. One would be, can we work with TBA to refine the, the current thing, given the, the scope that Julie's laid out and spent a lot of time on? And then the fire department is, are we ready to seek a conceptual design to see if the, I hate calling it this, but it's funny, at nine-thirty, the so-called Soros plan is doable and could result in a schematic design.
Yeah. Okay, so let's take the police station, because I think that's the easier of the two. And I think we could easily do a motion on that. But, um, Barney, do you have any?
Do you want me to put the motion on the floor first, and then we'll just have discussion?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
Let's do that.
All right. Uh, so I move that the select board authorize, uh, the town administrator to, uh, engage with TBA, um. Oh, thanks. Uh, sorry. Okay, to, uh, re-engage with TBA to amend the construction documents pursuant to the scope of work identified, uh, in our packets this evening. I think that's the first thing.
Second.
All right.
So this would result in me bringing you back a proposal for you to vote on.
Okay.
All right. So, um, any questions or discussion? I'm going to take a roll call vote.
Um, I have a question. So if it's more than thirty thousand or something, does, is there going to be a, somebody cry file that we didn't competitively bid that we just let TBA bid on as a sole thing?
Yeah, it's, I, I'll let Ryan answer that, but.
We, we had a lot of conversation about this. So the, um, the contract we had originally with TBA, um, and I both believe that we can amend that to, uh, incorporate this, this scope.
Okay.
Estimation change. If the thresholds are too much, we would, of course, vet that.
Okay.
Seem like it, it would be. Uh, the other components of this are engaging with peer review and making sure that the, the estimator is correct to the select board standard. So nothing would happen with this until we bring back a proposal, and I would have those answers for you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, roll call vote. Arnold, I.
Model, I.
Read I. Um, do we need step two and three to be in forms of motions as well?
No, that, that wouldn't happen until.
Well, after, yeah, okay, great. All right, all right. So this, kicking it off, yay. Um, this go on to the, um, fire department, firearm station. Um, I have a couple of questions about the proposed process. Um, you have, um, talk a lot about a selection committee, and I, um, and I understand a selection committee for selecting, let's say, a designer, but it seems to me at a certain point, we should be talking about building committee. I'm wondering if there's, they're the same, different, and how that's supposed to, how that's operating.
I'm going to be bureaucratic, not pejorative. So the, the process is, we first have to design. So the design is here, conceptual design, which would then get a schematic design, and then we would be talking, um, building committee.
Okay.
Building committee would take on the conceptual design to get us through schematics and construction documents.
Okay.
So we're, we're pretty, I don't want to say it's going to be slow, but we're pretty far from a building committee.
Okay, and the selection committee, um, towns, MFC, town staff, local architects, and, okay, so it looks like a.
I'm sorry, just to, to try and, selection committee is for the designer to create the conceptual design, not, not to guide the building.
Yeah, well, see, that's what I, where I'm concerned, because there's a lot of places here where, you know, there's going to be a conceptual, um, design that comes to the town, and what I wanted to know was who was going to, you know, um.
So this is to select the designer to create the conceptual.
I under, so, exactly, I, I got that. But then when they bring the deliverables, and as they're designing, who's going to be talking to them about this?
So that conceptual design would come back to the, the select board to see if you wanted to bring forth proposals to the town to do schematic design, and so at that point, I'm assuming you would create a building committee and guide.
Okay, so they still be can, they'll be working, though, along with the selection committee.
Yeah, I think, I think, right, Kate's asking it a different way, Ryan. How can, how can that committee once formed, or maybe a different committee, but that would be silly, inform that, help work with that design firm to make sure that what they do bring forward basically checks the boxes. They shouldn't run, you know, a closed loop process off on their own and then drop it in their lap.
So the RFP will, this is just to select the person who's going to do the conceptual design. So the RFP will outline how we're going to select that person, and the selection committee just make sure that we select the right one.
Okay, so I guess I was getting on, though, you know, to step six, seven, and eight.
Yeah, I know. Way far ahead.
All right, okay, I'm too far ahead, okay.
I think like, if I can just add, I probably would add a step between step six and seven, because I, um, to be consistent, actually, with the process that I outlined. Um, there would be a chance for the necessary for the, um, selected designer to bring the concept design back to stakeholders before it is like fully vetted and thrown out there at town meeting.
Yeah, that's what, yeah.
Is that what I'm hearing that you're like, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, I think you're hearing stake, we need stakeholder engagement in some ways.
Yes.
Especially this one, because it's a little more, you know, the, the police station's been through the meek round your empty um times. But this one is still kind of an open, it's still, to me, a, a napkin design.
Okay.
Yeah, this is going to get you a horrible napkin.
Yeah, yes. Okay. Excellent, I got it. So, uh, we want a
You want a motion?
A motion for step one.
Which is.
Excuse me, let me see. And step. And step two, or do you want that separate? Because step one is requesting the, and then step two is, um, selecting. Um, you know.
Oh, wait, step one, the request.
I think we should do step one, and then we should, we should authorize the TA or the whoever does it to request volunteers for for the selection committee, and then we'll review those when we get. Yeah.
Separate thing, okay.
All right, so the, the motion, then, the first one about procuring the conceptual design. What's the language we want for that?
Um, to authorize the town administrator to, um,
procure a conceptual design for the fire station?
Now to, um, publish a request for qualifications.
That makes, is that right? Okay. I move that the select board approve that the town administrator, um, what's the publisher requests for qualifications? Public, publish a request for qualifications um, in order to procure a conceptual design for the fire station.
Second.
Napkin. For the fire station.
Well, it's napkin, instead of a bar napkin.
Yes, okay, any discussion, further discussion? Ryan, you have any more, any other inputs before we vote?
I, I don't, but this is, this will be a very open process, so this isn't, we're not just going to go off, and then eventually you'll see a design. It's going to show you the RFP, we're going to put it out publicly. The design selection committee will be reported to you, and this is all just
Right.
Formality to start procurement, but basically what we're saying here is we're ready to go
Ready to get the bottom.
To get something to see if we're ready to go and renovating the fire department.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
Model, I.
Read, I.
And then we, shall I move that the town administrat, we authorize, I move that we authorize the town administrator to create a selection committee?
I, and I would go ahead and
Want me to list the?
Yeah, I put the list.
A selection committee from the municipal facilities committee, town staff, local architects, individual citizens who previously served on the public safety facilities task force and wish to volunteer.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Any further discussion?
So we're not, we are not going to vote them, he'll just, he'll present the slate, which we will vote, or?
No, because this is a
Okay, he, he just creates it.
Yeah.
Okay, got it, all right, thank you.
Okay. Because it's a decision that he.
Yeah, I got it, I got it, I got it.
All right, just, well, I just wanted to clarify for anybody about the record, the record for open meeting law.
Yeah.
Um, roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
Model, I.
Read, I.
All right, I know, I know it, it's her job, and she's overqualified for this, but, uh, what, the work that Julie put into this is worth thousands in.
Yeah, and we really appreciate, I mean, there's such a huge difference.
Save the town thousands of dollars in consulting.
Yeah.
Yes. All right, um.
I did want to ask about the parking analysis, are we not?
Yes.
But that, that's, this is the one that's easiest for me to do.
Okay, yeah, which is down.
Yes. All right.
Wait, uh, okay, um, parking analysis, it's, um.
Yeah, fifty-four.
Parking analysis, yep, got it, okay. Um, so what, what do we, what is our, yeah, what would you like from us tonight?
Um, I guess to authorize us to entertain a procurement process, to find a consultant to help with this, or at least, um, give us a, a price. This.
Okay. So I move that we authorize, uh, are we authorizing you as the town planner, or are we authorizing the TA? Okay, I move that we authorize the town administrator to, um, enter the procurement process to find a consultant to, um, give us a cost estimate on the parking analysis, is that right?
Maybe it'd be a quote.
A quote?
Yeah.
On, as a consultant, a consultant to quote, uh, give us a quote on uh, working with, with us on the parking analysis, working with the town planner on the parking analysis.
Yeah, the scope of work identified in the document.
Okay, yeah. Mentioned that particularly, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Let me try again. I move that, uh, the select board authorize the town administrator to, um, enter the procurement process. To get a quote, uh, on the scope of work as described in the uh, select board packet for a parking analysis.
Second.
Okay, um, questions, David?
Nope.
Comments, anybody? Roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
Model, I.
Read, I. Good. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just a modest amount of work that we've approved tonight for others besides ourselves.
Just putting other people's ideas on paper.
Yes.
It's everyone else's ideas.
Yeah, well, yeah, well done, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
All right, we were at, uh, professional development and professional organizations portion of the TA report. Um, it's not marked with page numbers, um, yeah.
You're going to be.
I don't, Julie talked about myself, but it's important, so I did receive my small town administrator certification, certification, which is um, requires certain amount of experience in professional development engagement, so happy to report that that's complete, and the town did invest in the tail end of some of that, so much thanks to the, the town officials, the select board, and the residents. Um, I'm also, uh, serving in some capacities on behalf of the town and, um, town administrators in general. So I was elected to serve as the Small Town Administrator Vice President and the Legislative Committee Chair as such. So, uh, just a little representation from us, I'm also currently serving on the MMA Fiscal Policy Committee.
Okay.
And then I finished my last class, all my free time for my MCC, MCPPO designation. So this allows me to do all the procurement that you approved tonight, which is like a month's worth of procurement work. Thank you for that.
Excellent, well done. Yeah, you for being ready to make all those.
Yeah. So when it says TA professional development, that's what I'm doing, so I'm just trying to demonstrate that it, that it is, is worth it, and it helps us understand, you know, our, our place in municipal government.
Yeah.
We held in all chairs meeting, this is a, a meeting that I assemble of, of board chairs to share information and receive reports from them to further connect our boards and committees in town. Uh, this is a quarterly meeting, this one was focused on, um, annual town meeting highlights, budget information, and conveying that to our board chairs. Um, alerting them of the fall town meeting, talking about town hall and other building updates. And then going over some very specific items that are mentioned in the master plan and in the select board goals, which is um, evaluation and goal setting for employees, and how we can be helpful there for those who appoint their own employees. How to volunteer onboard our volunteers, our newly appointed ones and chairs from our various boards and committees. And then each boarding committee gave an update, which, uh, we take very seriously, we take that information in and then try to share it around as a staff. Um, so that was done on Friday and, uh, continues to be well attended, and I think quarterly is the right pace for it, so we'll keep going. The next one will be in the fall.
Before you go off, uh, I was at that meeting, I think Barney was listening, and I know that, um, David was, but uh, one thing I, um, thought was, you know, we did talk about the onboarding, and there were a couple of new chairs. And I'm thinking that the chairs need onboarding in a different way than the new members, and I'm, um, I think that was demonstrated by some things that people said during the meeting, but, um, so I'm, I guess I'm going to encourage you and Aubrey to have a, you know, a chair onboarding. Uh, and slash refresher course, and that maybe we need to talk about certain policies, things, the, you know, ways to get things done. So for instance, for the open meeting law, uh, minutes have to be approved and, uh, within three meetings or thirty days, whichever is longest, but there, nothing in the law that says that they have to be posted. And I think that we, we need to be starting to think about various policies of the town where that we do want them posted. And then we need to push that information out to board, you know, to the chairs. So, and there's other things, but that's like one of them that I, I've been thinking about.
Yeah, I don't know if it's, um, possible for, you know, on that, that session to have a you know, some group, everybody together, chairs and volunteers, and then you, you have a break, you know, you break out the chairs for, um, I'm thinking, uh, you know, I really like the idea, Kate, and that they, they have not just some things around the, the minutes, but also like putting together your agenda, what's, you know, what's best practice for that? And, um, also some of the tips just about, you know, managing your meeting. Um, anyway, so if it, again, I don't know if that's that's feasible, I don't know what, you know, you and Aubrey have talked about in terms of the overall concept of that meeting, but just um, yeah, happy to get some more input if, if, when you and Aubrey start working on that.
Yeah, that'd be great, like anything, we're going to, we're going to get this first one going, we definitely wanted the chairs to see what their new members were hearing. But the idea of breaking out or making it longer for chairs, torturing them would be.
Well, no, I would do them separately, that's why, you know. Yeah.
In terms of the policy, that won't be ready for July seventeen, you're going to have to approve that first, but that makes total sense.
I get it.
Yeah, I'd, I agree, I'd suggested to, um, Aubrey and, uh, Ryan last meeting that something we did at school committee is a best practices binder, which could be a virtual binder, but you know, you start assembling all these dos and don'ts, whether they're policies, which we, of course, do policy, but there's just lots of guidelines, like tips for managing your meeting.
Right.
You know, and, and any other collateral, and just start assembling that library, so that when you do have these change of regime, you can give people a head start.
Yeah.
Agreed, we'll build on this, um, it won't be the only time we're offering it, and we'll get better.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So we did have a recreational marijuana dispensary inquiry, so the uh, land use team met with the CEO of Flower and Soul to hear a proposed plan for recreational marijuana dispensary in the Carlisle area. Became clear to the land use team that the, um, the resident was specifically looking at Carlisle because of a variety of factors to include the market and, uh, some of our bylaws.
Or the lack thereof?
Correct, the, um, the problem with this is there's not a lot of land available, which we know from all the other ventures in town, so I wouldn't say that an application is imminent, but if this, um, vendor could find a place, then they would be asking to come before the select board for a host community agreement discussion, so we're a little ways away, but I wanted to alert the board that this discussion was happening. And it's just a good example and use of how the land use team can help vet some of these issues and, and talk about things and alert everybody that something's coming, so that um, people can weigh in. The fall town meeting schedule, we talked about that, that is in my, uh, town administrator reports, so the open the warrant tonight, we're closing it on August eighth. And then we have to sign and publish it on September twelfth, which gives us the three to five meetings to discuss uh, warrant articles, and there's some big ones, so we should plan that. We're looking to start both the deputy chief and the sergeant hiring process in the police department, so that uh, we believe that a third party valuation is necessary, the proposal for deputy chief carries the cost of around five thousand dollars. The sergeant, if there are six or less applicants, would be a little under four thousand dollars, and if there's more than six applicants, it would be probably a couple thousand more. Uh, we have these, these dollars in the budget, they are built in from some vacancies we have, and, and they'll be covered in the operational budget. But I did want to make sure that there was no hesitation from the board on any of this. So I'll just pause to see if, if anybody wants to ask any questions about that, or discuss it further, or should we just move ahead?
Okay. David?
Um, what's the ask, I'm sorry?
Yeah, the ask is, uh, does anybody have a problem with doing the, um, uh, assessment centers for the sergeant?
No, not at all, not at all, sorry, I missed that.
And there is a cost to it, and.
Yeah, I agree, got to do it, yeah.
Yeah. So would you like a motion from us, and it says with select board approval?
So it, since it's budget neutral, it's not, it's not necessary, but if you're, if you want to talk about it more, you're against it, then we'll just stop the process. Otherwise, you're going to see an advertisement go out tomorrow.
Okay, no, I'm for it as well.
For it too.
Okay.
And David said he was for it, so, all right, we're done, okay, great.
All right, and we will send again the, um, the policies and procedures that Chief Amendola put together, which I think are comprehensive and are being issued to the department, um, and the advertisements will be thorough and go to everybody to make sure that it's a fully inclusive process. But we are trying to hire internal. So your summer goals and planning sessions, you have your first one coming up at our next meeting on July eleventh, uh, we've scheduled the library for this discussion, it is open to the public, but the idea is to retreat out of this area and discuss goals, as, as was highlighted many times tonight. So the agenda for that meeting right now is discussed by Kate and I, your chair, so this would be that tentative agenda that we have scheduled is to review your prior goals, which I've included in this packet. Um, this, we'll send out a note tomorrow to the select board to, to bring and prepare any initial thoughts and, um, suggestions for the coming years for goals. Then we would talk about, uh, town governance, sustainability, facilities, land and finances, and comp towns. Uh, there are two sessions planned for this, so, so maybe we don't get through all of it in one night, but that is the tentative agenda.
Wait, when you say two, so these, uh, six items, topics are to, are going to be covered over the course of the two sessions? Yeah. Okay.
So potential, and it says potential topics, there might be more.
Yeah, because.
Drop another, I don't know.
Because.
Well, we shouldn't.
Well, I, let me just, a couple of thoughts, one is, um, yeah, there are a bunch of, not a bunch, there, with those, so the discussion about, um, committees and how volunteers get onto boards, and the role of the liaison, and those liaison appointments, is, is that all?
That's town governance.
That's, that's coming into town governance, okay. So, um, okay. I'm sure you have sustainability on here, and then facilities, land, and finances, so that's a broad one.
Yeah, I think, I, I, I think, let's just make sure we're not losing, you know, getting tangled up in our underwear here, I believe that the objective of the paired meetings should be to emerge with a set of goals for the year, that's the basic objective. Now, how do we get there? Well, we should do two things, we should definitely review the prior goals. the prior goals, that's good baselining, and score ourselves, you know, evaluate ourselves and how we did. Cuz that will inform us, you know, what's working, what's not kind of thing, right, how can we improve? We should also then bring in these other things um, in terms of things we want to accomplish. And is it a realistic amount, I mean, and then we don't have to solve them this summer, we just have to frame it that these are things we want to solve.
Right.
We have to make sure that the list is realistic and, uh, and also accommodates, and this will be part of the discussion, kinda where we, where we move the needle in terms of delegation to the daytime government of things that we spend time on that maybe we shouldn't, to free ourselves to get a monie equal chunk of this done.
Yeah.
And that in and of itself is a dialogue, right, but I just wanna make sure we're, we're not solving for these things. We're, we're teaming them, we're prioritizing and teaming them up as goal settings for the year.
Well, the, the other place that we can be delegating to though is to, um, some of our committees, we could say, look, you know, you're
Yeah, right, wherever we go, exactly, that just
Work on this and because we can't do it all.
Right.
You know.
Right. Right. Right, and, and exactly right.
And, and the other thing
And in those cases, we also have to make
Go ahead.
Um, I was just gonna build on what you said, that, you know, say we say governance or sustainability rather, so well, you know, yes, these are your priorities, we agree, blah, 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 I mean, we already, now when we've kind of already had a discussion, but really we wanna be talking to those committees early in the year, setting that dialogue and then planning to revisit it at the end of the year, so that itself builds in a couple of sessions as we build out the calendar, um, for the year.
But I think it's gonna be particularly important to, I mean, I would put sustainability at the top of the list and also because there is a committee that has generated a work uh, list that cannot possibly be done with the, uh, with our current setup. Uh, and they'll burn out if they try to do it all, so I think we have to kind of rein
They have to guide it, yeah, right.
Say, um, this is a great work product you've got here, but, uh, we only want you to work on this and this, and when you're done with that, then you come back and we'll give you the next job.
Right, and, right.
Burn themselves out.
Right, but I mean, that's a subset of the larger thing, which is we need, which goes back to the discussion we just had with master plan. We need to prioritize for us, these are the things.
Yeah.
And, and that's why I also asked Julie and company to just make sure we're not missing efforts of people that have started things to say, okay, either, I mean, we don't really wanna say stop what you're doing, we wanna say, okay, this is what you, continue what you're doing, but please don't start these other three things.
Yes.
Right now, right.
Right. So just so to remind ourselves that we're gonna, the, what we see ahead of time is also gonna be the, um, the list from Julie about all the various, um, things that have been done so far.
Right.
Plan.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we've got to spend some time, and I didn't wanna, I didn't really wanna, you know, tell it's gotta be right after the fourth, but it really should be, we should get that material, not the weekend before the eleventh, I think, we should try to get it, Ryan, as soon after the July fourth break as possible, you're gone that week, right?
Yeah.
So I don't know. I mean, to make the meeting useful, we really need this material, we, we should, we should come in prepared of thinking, and, and we're at a little bit of a loss here because two or five are not even here today, but
Yeah, but boy
I mean, I don't know.
From tonight is when this session is happening, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, Madam Chair, you know, it's a new regime here, but, um, I guess I'm looking to you to be very specific in your framing of how you want that meeting to progress, because we could easily I wa, I wouldn't say waste, we won't waste it, but I think we really should think about the, the meetings as a pair. And part A, you know, just give you my opinion, part A is sort of the baseline setting, right, that's just where, where, where have we been? How have we done, what worked, what didn't, what's ongoing that we need to keep going? What hasn't been started that maybe has to get put, you know, we should kinda get the housekeeping piece of it done in the first meeting so that we are very clear in the second meeting what we need to really spend time discussing, cuz if we start, just spend, you know, a long time on a single issue, like say which is a sustainability priority, we, we will neglect some other things, I mean, right?
Um, I agree, David. Um, and I did have one specific, um, idea that I passed on to Kate and Ryan, which is, um, since it's at the library, um, and they close it, I think you have to get out of there by eight forty-five and so
Ooh, that's not good.
Building at nine, I'm just wondering if we could
I don't think it should be at library then, I, I don't think that's good planning on our part.
I'm sorry, David, but, well, let me just finish my thought here.
We can stay there late, I have the codes and
Oh, they
The note on the door, so.
Okay, um, but my thought was, um, we might wanna start earlier uh, in the, you know, late afternoon, work for ninety minutes and then have a dinner break and then put in another ninety minutes. It's the same kind of three hours that we often schedule with an additional half hour in the middle for food.
That's, that's a good idea, we should do that.
Okay. But I guess it means talking to Travis and Nathan to get them on board, yeah.
We'll have to email Travis since he's in Italy celebrating his anniversary. Okay. All right, so
We have our planning meeting tomorrow, so we can finalize some of this.
Um, right.
So, uh, for in terms of recognition, I already talked about the, the work Jim and Newport Construction did on our roads, but, um, Jim did take a couple pre-planned vacation days before he was appointed as director and Brendan Murfield, our, our newly appointed DPW foreman took over, um, was providing regular updates to, to me, um, through Jim and did a great job managing the project, so, um, check plus on his first, his first major management efforts. As, um, David mentioned, just some, some dates for the select board, I, I am taking vacation, I have blocked off some time as I know it's a board meeting week, so a couple mornings to, to do work next week if I need to. Uh, it's sort of a staycation, so I'll be in the area. And then, um, the week of seven to eleven August, I've been ordered to finish my started major academy capstone, so I'll be retreating and writing getting that complete, but I will come back for the meeting on the eighth and, and will be available generally, so I'm on leave in order to finish a academic project for the military, so I have some availability, but I do need to get that done so I can be effective, uh, for you for the, the fall. And then your board meetings are on the, um, select board dates of interest as well.
Yeah, and if anybody cannot make it, please let me know early, not the day of, if possible.
Well, you know who you need to send that message to, because you have me and David here, so.
And, 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 uh, Travis told us two weeks ago that he wasn't going to be here.
I wasn't gonna point out in particular.
He didn't tell me the day, the day of, let's do that one.
I was lobbying for, I was lobbying for the old rules where we couldn't have held the meeting cuz I wasn't in town, but
Yeah, yeah, but you know, we had a hearing, this would have been a disaster.
No, no, we have to have the meetings, we really have so much to do.
We do, I mean
I just shudder, I shudder to think if we miss a meeting, it's like, just so
I'm gonna be remote on the, um, the July twenty-fifth meeting, I'm pretty sure, but I'll, I'll
Remote is one thing, you know. We Okay, great, and we, so there's a lot of information in this packet about the, you know, some of the goals. Right, um, but we'll add some things that, um, you've asked for, David.
Yep. Okay.
All right, um, we did the minutes.
Yep.
Liaison reports.
Um, well, I will just say that, um, the, uh, um, Energy Sustainability Committee, um, had their meeting last Thursday and Debbie is stepping, Debbie Bentley is stepping down as chair. I just wanna acknowledge, you know, what a great job she did for the first, um, iteration of that committee and that, um, we have a revised, uh, slightly revised work plan from them, so we should make sure that goes out for this conversation. And they're gonna be electing new officers at their next meeting.
Okay. Is there any community input, and I guess I would have to see the screen. Ryan wants to stop sharing. Any community input before we adjourn?
Not for me, if you're looking at me, I can't tell, but no, I'm good, thank you. Yeah, I think they all know, I'm the only one here except for Christina.
Well, you know, Genie and Genie. Genie had community, Genie, actually, um, since you wrote your, uh, input that you read to us in this evening, could you, would it be possible for you to send me a copy of that? Since it was very well written and I, I would like to have
It probably should go in the minutes.
Yes, I, I'm sorry, I couldn't get my, unmute to unmute. Um, yeah, I already, believe it or not, I sent Jen a copy of it asking for Ryan's permission that I could have it included in the meeting uh, pack, a meeting, uh, uh, minutes.
Yeah, I also wanted to have it, you know, I wanted to keep a record of it.
Okay, so it should be, you know, soon on your email.
I appreciate that, thanks.
Okay.
All right, I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, well, roll call.
Arnold, I.
Modell, I.
Reed, I. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Madam Chair.